Welcome, everybody. This is a Chattanooga County Regional Planning Commission meeting and my name is Ethan Collier and I'll be chairing today's meeting. Couple of things before we get started. Planning Commission has received this packet in the mail a little over a week ago and Planning Commission's had the opportunity to review it in advance of today's meeting. So at times during the meeting, we do move really pretty quickly, so make sure to follow along. Hopefully you have a copy of the agenda there in front of you and you can follow along. In each case, what I'll do is I'll read off the case number and I'll read off the address. And in every case, I'll ask if there's any opposition present. To be clear, opposition sometimes is people who are actually opposed to the case and already have an opinion. Sometimes it's just people here that want to ask some questions. In either scenario, if you're here and you're not the applicant and you want to speak in regards to the case, make sure to raise your hand when I ask if there's any opposition here. Because if I don't see any hands go up, then we may very well miss the opportunity to hear from you and we want to hear. I'll then ask if the applicant's present. Normally they are. If we have opposition here or we have a staff recommendation to deny, we will most often hear the staff presentation. And then we will first hear from the applicant. The applicant will have seven minutes to present their case. The opposition will have a total of nine minutes. We do stick very strictly to the nine minutes. So if you're here and you want to speak in opposition to the case, make sure to get out of your chair and line up here on the right side of the room behind the microphone here so that I can see that, you know, there might be seven or eight or nine or 10 people that want to speak in opposition, but there's only a total of nine minutes. And then we can figure out how y'all can use that time wisely because we do not often extend additional time. After we hear from the opposition, the applicant will have two minutes to get up and respond. And, you know, make, make sure when you come up to the microphone, this red light is on, you see this here. Make sure it's on and state your name and address for the record. And, oh, I guess one other thing is that we have a lot on our agenda we do every month. So after the case, after we take action on it, you may want to talk to some of the other folks that have been here. If that's the case, that's great. Just make sure to get out of the room as quickly as reasonably possible and have those conversations outside rather than in here so that we can move on with our business. With that, I'll jump into our agenda, which today we're, today and hopefully in the future, we're going to start our Planning Commission meetings with a special presentation and discussion. This week, the Greater Chattanooga Realtors Association is here, so we'd love for you to present to us. Josh, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair, Vice Chair and Commissioners. I've had the pleasure of working with a number of you before, but it's wonderful to, to be with you all today. Real quick, my, Josh Branham, I'm Governmental Affairs Director at Greater Chattanooga Realtors. Today I brought some friends with me today. First, I want to introduce you all to Jay Jennings. He's our new Chief Operating Officer. He comes to us from the Huntsville Association of Realtors. And so going forward, he and I can help with any other questions you all may have. And to give, while at Greater Chattanooga Realtors, we do a lot of things. None of us on staff actually have a real estate license. So that's why I brought James Myers here in the, in the tie, looking very sharp. He is owner broker of Block City Homes. He is also Chairperson of our RPAC Committee. At New Member Orientation, each month, I say that our association is only as strong as the people who choose to lead it. And James is one of the reasons why, why we are so active in our community. So James will be able to follow up with you all if you have specific questions about boots on the ground, what your questions are about the real estate market here locally. But as I mentioned today, I'm going to give you a brief walkthrough of a nearly 20-year look at Hamilton County's housing market from 2006 until the end of 2024. You'll notice that the data ends with 2024, the reason being that 2025 hasn't ended yet. And so there are trends that we're seeing for the year of 2025, and I'll mention those briefly when we get to those. And also lovely Assistant Mr. Brian is going to be my clicker today. So Brian, next slide, please, sir. Briefly, founded in 1912, Greater Chattanooga Realtors is the voice of real estate in our region. We represent more than 3,000 members across Hamilton and Sequoia Counties in Tennessee, but we also include in Georgia, Katusa, Dade and Walker Counties. As part of the National Association of Realtors, we support professionals and partners that make this housing market work. Next slide, Brian. Our members serve, our members cover residential, commercial, industrial, land, multifamily, appraisal and property management. We also work with affiliate partners like lenders, inspectors, entitlement insurance providers. Next slide, Brian. Our vision is to be the voice of real estate in Greater Chattanooga. Our mission is to uphold the high standards, deliver member services and advocate for property rights with strong community engagement. Our core values are professionalism, respect, advocacy, service and community engagement. I'll also add that Realtors are also bound to a strict code of ethics, which is above and beyond any state real estate licensing that's required. Next slide, Brian. We operate our own residential multiple listing service on Flex MOS and a commercial information exchange on Crexie. Our MOS serves over 3,000 members and all statistics in this presentation are drawn from our MOS and reflect Hamilton County data only. Want to stress that, that although we do cover five counties, this data that we're going over is purely Hamilton County data today. Next slide, Brian. The two objectives that I have today, want to highlight trends that affect housing supply and affordability. Secondly, I want to show why we need more housing inventory at all price points to sustain healthy growth. Go ahead, Brian. Just wanted to find some quick terms. I'm going to be talking about month's supply of inventory. That term estimates how long it would take to sell what is currently listed at the current sales pace. Six months is considered a balanced, balanced market. And that comes from HUD, Freddie Mac and Fannie Mae. And over six, if the housing inventory is under six, six months, it favors sellers. If the month's supply of inventory is over six months, it favors the buyers. Next slide, Brian. Now we're going to look at months inventory. From a post-recession high, month's supply trended down to about the low one month for last year, for 2024. That long seller leaning stretch placed steady upward pressure on prices and limited options for buyers. Go ahead, Brian. So these terms, active listings are homes that are currently available for sale now. Sold properties are completed transactions and new listings are the fresh supply that are entering the housing market. Go ahead, Brian. Active listings fell sharply over the last decade. Fewer choices pushed prices up and lengthened the search for a suitable home. Go ahead, Brian. Demand held reasonably steady even as supply thinned out, thinned out, rather. When normal demand meets a smaller supply, competition increases and affordability is strained. Go ahead, Brian. Reduced supply plus sustained demand leads to increased prices. And increased prices affects residents, employers, recruitment and long-term community growth. Go ahead, Brian. You'll see on this chart here, note the clear downtrend in the active listings since 2010. Now, if I had my pointer here, on here, I could highlight it for you. But yeah, Brian, can you just point where 2010 is? Yes. So that shows where the, where the downturn in active listings. That slope explains a lot of the price movement that you've, that you'll see with the increasing prices. Go ahead, Brian. This is the monthly average of properties sold. Even as you'll see median prices increase, steady, the, the properties sold has remained steady. When demand does not drop in, in line with supply, buyers compete more, which drives up housing purchases and prices. Brian, you can go ahead. This is the month's supply of inventory that I've mentioned a couple of times. Again, six months reflects a healthy housing market. Brian, we hover over 2,000 and the highest peak there. So that was four point, what is it, Brian? Four, that's 4.6. Again, six month supply is considered a healthy housing market. And you can see since 2011, we have not come close to that in Hamilton County, which is a contributing factor to housing prices. All right, next slide, Brian. Thank you, buddy. I got lost for a second. Median prices, it's no secret, median, median sales prices have risen over the county and over the, the country. The trajectory mirrors a tight inventory environment. Go ahead, Brian. This is the sales price to list price ratio. This is a percentage where you won't see any houses that are listed at $100,000, but just for my ease of, since I'm not a math guy, this percentage would reflect how close to that list price that properties are sold to. You'll see 100% there. It actually in 2021 and in 22, actually there were multiple bid situations. So that actually drove the sales price, the, the closing price higher than what the sales price was when you have multiple people bidding against each other. Next slide, Brian. As we come to the end of my part of the presentation here, average days on market. This statistic shows how long it takes from a property to be listed, how long it takes to list a property until it goes under contract to be sold. Days on market declined during the most competitive period a few years ago, post COVID. Then has, it has eased a bit with rate shifts that are now in the mid-sixes, but even now remains low compared to the mid-2000 conditions. Next slide, Brian. So a few months ago, I had some requests from local officials for some Hamilton County only data concerning what the market may look like if the mortgage rates dropped from a 7% down to a even 6%. I reached out to our National Association of Realtors and our chief economists and they presented this data to me. So currently with the median home sales price in Hamilton County, which is $378,000, 7% of that, of the population, which is 49,000, can afford to buy a home. If that rate drops to a 6%, that's an increase up to 53,000 and some change. That's about 9,000 more households. And typically 10% of eligible buyers enter into that housing market, which means that just over 900 additional home sales are expected in Hamilton County in the next 12 to 18 months, assuming that rates come down to an even 6%. Go ahead, Brian. So in closing here, the, the conclusion call to action, we are here to advocate for increased housing supply across all pricing levels. It's, bless you, to support growth and improve housing attainability. I'll say that this reflects the housing dynamics, obviously for Hamilton County, but also for our, for our immediate community as well in the Chattanooga metro region. Next slide, Brian. So as I finish here, I will hand it off to my friend James to answer any questions you have about the housing market, just anecdotally what we may be seeing here. I will say, looking at data, I wanted to bring our most recent data to you, but it actually comes out this afternoon and it just didn't come out in time. But I will have some additional Hamilton County specific data for you. But inventory is looking up for the year for 2025. But again, it's not concluded for the year, so we didn't want to present incomplete information. But do want to acknowledge, as I finish here, Matt Williams and Bethany Miller, who helped me gather this information and also Fancy Moore, our Communications Director, who helped put this information together for me as a person who is not a math guy. So I'm very appreciative to them. And now I'll hand it off to my friend James here to answer any questions you may have. We'll try to answer those as best as possible.
Thank you. Brian, can you go back to that slide that, that one right there? So one question that I have is what, so I, I can see that there's at a 7% interest rate, 49,000 people in Hamilton County can afford to buy a house? Is that, is that what, is that the way I'm reading that?
Yes, sir. That's according from the National Association Realtors, their economic team.
Okay. So, so that, just making sure I understand, only 49,000 people in Hamilton County can afford to buy a house based on that median price?
Well, that would be households. So that may, the, the population may trend differently on that. And I can, I can reach out to them. They're very responsive and then I can have them break that down a little bit further. But yes, they just, a blanket term of households.
Okay. Do, do you know, I mean, I can't imagine you went off the top of your head. Do you know how that median price has changed over the last 10 years? Did you have a slide to that?
There was a slide on that. I'm trying to remember off the top of my head. There it is, right there. So, and on 2024, you'll see if you hover over at 378 and then from, and I can send this presentation to you all as well.
So what, what all do you think the contributing factors to that? I mean, obviously one of them is supply and demand. But what other contributing factors are there to that price run-up that we've seen since really 2017, 2018?
I'll let James hop in, but I'll say, like you said, it's a matter of, we live in a great state and a lot of people want to move here. And that's a, a great problem to have. It also brings, you know, infrastructure needs, you know, headaches, growing pains that come with that. You know, aside from the, the neighborhood we live at, it's really a supply issue. And this is a supply issue that we don't face just here, but we face it across the country. And James, anything that comes to mind for you?
Well, I think we're seeing the, the impact of, I think, the last five years in particular. Chattanooga historically has already, always had a kind of an even keel. We did not experience the same highs and lows that the market experienced in other places in the country. So for us, this is a little bit of an anomaly. And I think in the last five years, it was just a perfect storm of a lot of factors that contributed to what people were looking for in housing and how they intended to use it. I think that COVID in particular changed how people wanted to use property, the time that they spent in it. It allowed people flexibility on where they could live because it was, it really kind of contributed to the remote economy. So people had the ability to move. Interest rates were still low and people were, had a lot of cash on hand to be able to, to get into housing. But because the inventory was so limited, people who were buying property were then using that cash to be more competitive than the other person to try and get the house that was on the market. And I think all of those things together, and I don't think anybody planned for that. And I don't think that, that you could, but you look at all of those contributing factors that came together and it just contributed to an escalation in property values that we have not seen before. I think that that's starting to trend towards, we're finding a new equilibrium. I think historically, if you look at the number of listings that we have on the market and compare it to, because I mean, these graphs are going back 15, almost 20 years. I think we still have limited inventory in comparison to where we have been in other times in the market history. But because interest rates have come back up, because prices are still staying at the high end, we've not seen a huge adjustment in those prices. A lot of buyers have backed out of the market. And because of that, so we do have inventory increasing, we have buyers that are kind of waiting to see if something's going to change. And because that's kind, because of that dynamic, it's, it's, we're finding a new equilibrium. And we are, I think, approaching a balanced market. We're not fully there yet. But the numbers that I pulled for Hamilton County up for September were showing that we were trending towards just over four months of inventory on the market. We're starting to see a little bit more flexibility in pricing on the market, I think. So I don't misquote myself here. In the last week, and this is for residential property only, this is for all of Hamilton County, in the last week, we had 465 new listings come on the market, but we had 490 price changes. And typically when you see a price change, they're coming down. That's, you don't see them go up very often. So we are beginning to see more price changes than there are new inventory coming on the market. And that can be an indication that we're starting to see a little bit of flexibility there. In terms of list price to sales price ratio, we're still between 95 and 96%. So we're not seeing a lot of change in what's happening with, where, you know, they're not coming off their list price that much. However, that number is indicative of the list price that it goes under contract at, not necessarily the list price that they started at. So, so I think we are beginning to see things level out a little bit. Here again, that's subject to change. As you, I mean, obviously I'm not saying anything new here, but if some, you know, if interest rates were to trend downward dramatically and a lot of people that have backed out of the market were to suddenly come back in, these, you know, the trend could easily go one way or the other. But as of right now, we are finding a little bit more balance.
Thank you. Matt, did you have a question?
I did. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Thank you all for this presentation. I think one of the things that kind of hits me in, in the data that you presented is the median sales price of a home being $378,000. You know, the, the HUD guidelines that you were referencing earlier about six months supply, you know, HUD also uses the kind of traditionally, like the one-third of your income being, you know, of, of going straight to housing costs. If you have to spend, expend as a family more than a third of your income on housing costs, that, that essentially means that that housing is now unaffordable. You're spending more on your, your sort of, you know, housing as a percentage of your overall. Real quickly, when I do the math on the, the $378,000, you, you would need to be earning somewhere around, and your, your data may say differently. I'm just up here, you know, flying away, crunching this as quick as I can. That, that, that's sort of somewhere in the ballpark of around $117,000 for household income. And Nathan may have the better statistic on this than I do, but I, I think the last time I checked, the median household income in Hamilton County is around $75,000. So it, it seems like we have in our housing affordability, a pretty substantial gap between what the average family can afford and what the average price of the, the unit is that's, that's on the market. And that's not a common, these are just, this is just data. You know, I'm, I'm just wondering, like what factors are all playing, I mean, and I know this is a hydro, you know, so, but from, from the real estate market perspective, what all factors do you think are realistically playing into this? Are the sticks and bricks more expensive? The land costs going up exponentially, like what, what, because it feels like the, you know, just those two pieces of data, like right next to each other feels like a pretty big hill to climb.
I think the answer to that is just yes. Yes, land is more expensive. The cost to build a house is more expensive. And one of the things that we didn't see here, and I think would be an interesting comparison, and forgive me, I didn't have time to run these numbers, but I do think that population growth would be an interesting data point to add into this. Because I mean, I know from my personal experience that I've seen an increase in the number of people that are relocating here. So I would be interested to see, to do a comparison of what has been the increase in population over the last five to 10 years versus the median sales price as well.
Yeah, because I feel like that supply and demand curve, you know, if, if, if the demand is on an increase and the supply is not also able to continue to outpace it, which would create the, you know, lowering of, you know, on the supply and demand, then absolutely would, I guess, because, because one of the places that my head goes is also thinking about, we're not, I mean, we are talking about new starts, but we are also talking about existing inventory. And, and so if the demand curve is outpacing both existing inventory coming online as well as new starts, then it kind of also feels like it's, it's adding fuel to what it, what seems like is a, is a little bit of a, of an issue.
Well, and I know this is not the first presentation that you all have seen about, I mean, when we talk about attainable or affordable housing, you know, I've seen a number of different presentations right now. And even, even when you're playing with smaller new starts, you know, if you're looking at smaller houses. even when you're playing with smaller new starts, you know, if you're looking at smaller houses, smaller footprints, more units per acre, however you play with those numbers, um, that still doesn't change the fact that the cost to build right now is still high. And even the sales points that I'm seeing from some of those presentations would still be, like you were saying, uh, maybe beyond the reach of more of, uh, the people who live here than we would like for that to be the case. I mean, I can say, and, and, and just in looking historically, um, I mean, there was a time at the beginning of these numbers when there were more properties in the hundred to $200,000 range than there were half a million and up in our area. There's been a huge reversal in that. There is very limited inventory under 300. And, and everything is, and, and over half a million has increased, uh, you know, exponentially. So, um, and I, here again, I think we've seen the bulk of that in the last, we're only talking about the last five years, five, six years, really. Uh, that all kind of came together.
Mr. Janeway, you had a question?
Yeah, I'm just curious about some, if you'll go back to that other slide, Brian. Um, I'm just kind of curious at some of the background data here. So, um, does this assume that you have some, some nominal amount for down payment? Does it assume like a 3% or what is it assuming?
Uh, actually, yes, and, um, I cut off on that slide. That was my bad. Uh, that does, uh, include a 10%. It was a 10% down payment. Yes, sir.
Um, and then it gives this 7%, 6%. Is it saying at the bottom there that 10% is sort of the normal number or is that saying 10% of the seven or 6%?
That was, uh, the National Association of Realtors said typically it's 10%. Uh, it of that available number, uh, is, um, uh, 10% typically is the one that purchases of that number.
And then, um, I guess I was just sort of thinking about our market over the past few years. Cause I, I bought my first home back in 2016. Um, and then I bought my second home in 2019. And, um, my equity obviously has gone through the roof just because of the timing of when I bought. Um, I, I'm just curious if they factored that in at all with these numbers? Because a lot of people, um, purchased during that timeframe and do have a lot of equity in their homes. And I wonder how that would affect, you know, the affordability of housing, moving that equity on to a new house, even though interest rates are higher. You know, what, sort of what does that do to the numbers and was that factored in at all or is that?
That's a, that's a great point and I'm not sure if it was. So I can check on that and, and let you know, but that's a, that's a great point too. We do also say, um, uh, in, in the realtor world, um, it's well known that, you know, uh, the number one way to pass along generational wealth is to own that, that home and, 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 and start building your, your generational wealth that way. So the, the great news is that if you're in the market already, great, great job. Your property values have gone up significantly. The issue obviously, as James mentioned, is just trying to get people in the door, uh, on that first home to begin with. Uh, and I did check for Tennessee, the, um, median age of the first time home buyer, I believe was 38, uh, 38, 39. And that is a marked increase over the years, um, you know, decades past when it was, uh, in the low 30s.
Mr. Wow.
I have one more question, sorry. Uh, so I guess, you know, I mean, the, the thinking on, uh, you know, with, I'm sitting here thinking through, well, we are the Chattanooga Hamilton County Regional Planning Commission. So, you know, the, in, in particular, I think one of the, I think all of us are up here because we have a deep care about a, a lot of these, these issues that are on the table for, uh, you know, all people in Chattanooga and Hamilton County. Um, and, and I guess I'm thinking about the, the lens through which we are looking at this topic pertains to, uh, land use policy. You know, that's, that's what we're, that's what, what we're about sitting up here. And I guess, you know, we are just simply focused on, on looking at Hamilton County data here. But, you know, lines are, for the most part, political lines are arbitrary and, uh, and, and, you know, that, that market view and you guys are, you know, the greater read, you know, area. And I guess, um, it, where, where we've heard, we've heard from Mayor Womp before that, oh, you know, right now more than 50% of the, uh, labor force that works at a business or for somebody, some way, somehow within Hamilton County, more than, more than half of that does not reside in Hamilton County. And I guess what my question is, is as we've been seeing this, you know, sort of, um, inversion of ha- housing cost within Hamilton County, the sort of, you know, the disappearance of these hundred to $200,000 homes and the rise in 500 to 600 plus thousand homes. I guess I'm wondering, are, are we seeing the, the, are we seeing that portion of the market appearing in other counties that just happen to be around us like you guys are, you do have data on Walker, Sequatche and Dade. Um, but I wonder about Ray, Bradley, Bledsoe, Marion, you know, there's a lot of counties that, that touches. And I guess, um, where, where the, I mean, for all intents and purposes, real property utilization is just sort of one gigantic lever that, that, that is kind of what we're exercising up here. But, but I, I guess, I'm wondering, are we seeing development patterns that we have absolutely no control over occurring on the, du- due to some of these factors? I guess that's kind of like a yes or no with a little bit of like.
Well, and, and I've got James here, which is great because I, I, I wasn't just trying to be rude looking on my phone. I actually do have access to, to some of that data. So, uh, you had mentioned, uh, Mr. Matt, you had mentioned Walker County for 2024. The median sales price there was, uh, $254,000. Uh, and then some of the other, you had mentioned Ray County, I believe, uh, $296,000 for Ray County. Marion County was 275,000. Um, and, uh, the, the, I'll say the, the smallest amount that I see is from Chautauqua County, which is at 211,000, uh, for the year for 2024. So I, I hope that answers some of your question. And, and I know these are a lot of numbers and I know when people throw numbers at me, uh, uh, it's too much. Uh, you all are able to reach out to me. I can look up specific areas for you if you'd like. And, and James, yeah, what do you have?
Well, the only thing I would say in regards to that is that while those numbers may sound less than what Hamilton County is right now, they are not indicative of what the local populations are used to in those areas. They are still higher. So, yes, I think that people from Hamilton County are be, are looking in these other areas for more affordable options. But that is in comparison to the income demographics for Hamilton County, not necessarily what the income demographics would have been for the populations in Ray and Sequatche and Walker, Dade, you know, if you're looking at those.
It'd be sort of like moving the same problem over to another county.
Right, right. So the numbers may look different. They may be less than ours, but I mean, typically, I would say historically, those counties, those numbers were always lower than Hamilton County, um, to begin with, but I think that those still reflect a significant increase from what those counties were five years ago as well. So I don't know that the, I don't know if that different numbers, but still the same challenges, I guess, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, no, thank you.
Any other questions? Mr. Janeway.
The market drives that to extent though, right? I mean, w- we see four and $500,000 home selling.
Because people were willing to pay four and $500,000 homes for what had been a two, 200 or $250,000. Absolutely. It is a market driven phenomenon. I mean, when, in the height of COVID, when we had people coming in that were relocating from other places in the country that had cashed out, they had lots of cash, we had affordable housing and they were paying 80 and a hundred thousand dollars over their appraisal in cash to get the house. I mean, that's, that's the market. That's what drove the prices that we got to. And I've seen both, I have seen both of those happen personally where, you know, they were, I was on the selling side. If they'd been my buyers, I'd had something writing saying, you chose to do this not because I told you to do it. I would never advise a buyer to, but that's what people were doing. They were, they, to get the house because the inventory was so extremely limited that they were willing to, to pay over market to get in there. And that's what created the new market because as soon as somebody's done that, that's your comp for the next person to come in and do that. So.
Yeah, it's just an interesting phenomenon because, um, you know, there's, there, there's almost been a national equalization of housing prices to some extent. I mean, California is still a lot more expensive than Tennessee, but to an extent, there's been this equalization because of what we went through with COVID and everything and interest rates being low and all that kind of stuff. But we haven't really seen wages catch up to some of that equalization. So we still, you know, are probably quite a bit lower on the wage front in the Chattanooga, Hamilton County area. But our housing has gotten more expensive. Um, really not through necessarily any fault of our own. It's just people wanted to move to a place that was either quieter, smaller, lower property taxes, et cetera. And they chose here, uh, or somewhere in the state. And, um, it, it's, it's inflated, uh, for lack of a better word, housing, um, you know, prices and housing worth.
Yes.
Well, thank you all for being here and we really appreciate it.
And as we finish up, uh, really appreciate this opportunity just to, you know.
We have one more question.
Oh, yes, sir.
Commissioner Highlander.
Uh, thank you, Chairman. You've alluded, you already mentioned most of what I was going to say, both you and Mr. Janeway together. I know there's an influx of people from California, Illinois and New York in my district. Quite, quite a few, and I've talked to several of them. They're my new constituents. Um, and, and you've answered a lot of my questions. But do you have any data on how many people, obviously they bring the market cost up? When I, one gentleman I talked to from California bought a house twice the size of what he had, paid cash from his equity and had money left over. When there's a much higher demand, uh, in other areas they can sell and move here, especially when they can work online, as he's doing. Do you have any idea of how many people roughly are coming in and purchasing from out of state as opposed to local people wanting to buy?
I had, um, thank you, Dr. Highlander. Um, I have data, I was trying to Google it real quick. Uh, there's data from where, uh, the, the top states people are moving to Tennessee from, but it doesn't have specific numbers on it. Uh, I can, uh, that'd be just interesting from my own knowledge to jump into. So I'll, I'll be happy to look that up.
At your, at your convenience. I, I didn't mean right now. At your convenience. I'd like to see that. Obviously our low tax base i- is very drawing a lot of people in.
And no income tax.
Pardon me, and, and the lack of state income tax is another big, thank, thank you very, thank you, Chairman.
And this is a, a, would love to have a ongoing, you know, conversation with you all about this. You know, our association's here to be a, a source of knowledge for you all and, and all the work that you do. So thank you for.
If I made you say it, one, one brief, on first time home buyers, I looked, I did a little research on this. And if they have not bought a house within the last five years, they're considered a first time home buyer. The way I've read it. Okay, thank you.
Mr. Anderson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, and, and Josh, thank you for, for the presentation today. Really appreciate it. To, to add on to, to my friend Commissioner Highlander's request, uh, I, I can tell you that our, our city housing team has seen that while it is, while everyone knows, everyone in this audience knows or has met someone for, who's moved here from California or moved here from Michigan or New York or whatever, that becomes the anecdotal reason that population is growing. It is not in fact, the reason population is growing. Uh, it's just that we think that it is the number one growth in population is people being born here. And people moving out of their parents' homes here is the number one need for housing that, that our team has seen. So let's get the people who are moving here. Let's capture those numbers. But it would also be more impactful to tell how many people are being born here, how many people are moving out of their parents' houses here, moving out of their spouse's house because they're getting divorced. Wha- what is the local demand? Cause we know that it's greater than the people who are moving in.
And there's a real opportunity to, for us to work with the, the chamber and then also look at, I'm sure, a census data that we can help gab, uh, gather that information. Thank you.
That'd be great. Well, thank you all. Any other questions? All right, appreciate it. All right. First item under new business is, um, H C S D dash 25 dash 46. It's a preliminary plat, McCauley Ferry subdivision, lots one through 39, located at 1829 McCauley Ferry Road. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? What's will the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion?
Is that approved with conditions?
Any other discussion? All in favor say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is H C S D dash 25 dash 47. This is a final plat for Harbor Chase subdivision. It's a planned unit development phase two, lots 45 through 77 and 105 through 131, various addresses at Harbor Chase Loop include 8100 block of Snow Hill Road. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is H C S D dash 25 dash 48. This is final plat for reserves at Canterbury Fields subdivision. It's a planned unit development lots 38 through 88 and 104. It's located at 8600 block of Udoa Georgetown Road and staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Second.
We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is H C S D dash 25 dash 49. This is a final plat for Nature Coast subdivision phase two. Lots 12 through 47, 70 through 100 and community lots 204. It's located at 8209 Bell Mill Road. And staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present? All right. I see that. And is the applicant present? Mr. Schultz.
Yeah, this is a, a phase two, uh, of this overall subdivision plat on Nature's Cove. As you stated earlier, this is lots 12 through 47, 70 through 100 and community lots two, 204. Uh, the preliminary plat was approved last year. Uh, staff reviewed this and this does meet the subdivision requirements for final plat and staff recommended to approve as submitted with a couple of changes.
Right, ma'am. Mike, if you're okay, let's hear from the opposition first. Ma'am, did you want to speak in regards to this case?
Yes, I live on Roanoke Avenue. And, um.
Can you state your name and address for the record?
My name is Harriet Monique Hampton. And my address is 1410 Roanoke Avenue.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm not sure she's talking with the right case as she's opposed to. We'll find out though.
We're, we're on item four on the agenda. This is for Nature's Cove subdivision. It's on Bell Mill Road, Bell Mill Road.
Okay, I, I heard Roanoke.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, we'll, we'll get there in just a minute. We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? Commissioner Highlander.
Uh, Mr. Chairman, I, I understand this is, uh, it's not really against the plat approval. This is more of a comment. Uh, and I know Mr. Janeway's been trying to work on some, uh, road, the intersection of Bell Mill and Hunter Road. And I have reached, I personally reached out to the landlord, finally reached him. He is in Savannah. Uh, but I, I would certainly hope and encourage that we could do some road improvement there because it's a very dangerous intersection. So it's just more of a comment than anything else in relation to this plat. Thank you.
Uh, thanks, Dr. Highlander. We have tried to reach out to the landlord several times, including going and knocking on his door. Um, so if there's an easy way to get him the info that we need to get him so that we can start a conversation about acquiring that property, that would be ideal.
He is at his vacation home on Tybee Island.
Okay.
Did, I'm, I'm sorry, I forgot. We had a motion. It was seconded. Was that discussion or did we already take action? That was discussion. Any, any further discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item five on our agenda. It's H C S D dash 25 dash 50. This preliminary pat for Holly Hills subdivision. Lots 251 through 278. It's located at 2390 Jenkins Road and a handful of addresses at Angie Drive and staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any questions about the conditions or anything like that? Okay, what's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve. Do I hear a second? And it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item six on our agenda is H C S D dash 25 dash 51. This preliminary plat for Tanner Mill subdivision. It's located in the 3400 block of Udoa Ringgold Road and staff is. It's located in the 3400 block of Udwall Ringgold Road, and staff is recommended to defer for 30 days. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present?
We have to defer 30 days.
We have a motion to defer for 30 days, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item seven is a case HCSD-25-52. This is a preliminary plat for Brooks Farm subdivision. It's located at 9101 Amos Road, and staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any questions? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item eight on our agenda is SDP-25-30. This is a final plat for Amber Cove subdivision lots 1 through 46, located at 6107 Hickson Pike. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any questions? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and did I hear a second? It has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Item nine on our agenda is SDP-25-31. This preliminary plat for Cameron Harbor subdivision. It's located at 508 Molly Lane, and staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is the applicant present? Is there any opposition present? Do you have any questions? What's will the commission? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on our agenda is, is item 10. It's SDP-25-32. It's a final plat for 2669 Chestnut Street. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Any questions? We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case is item 11. It's SDP-25-33. It's a final plat for 2501 Chestnut Street. Staff is recommended to approve with conditions. Is there any opposition? What's will the commission? We have a motion to approve with conditions, has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. First item under old business is a mandatory referral. It's case 2025-0130. This is for an unopened right-of-way off of the 4200 block of Bunny Oaks Drive. Staff is recommended to approve. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, there was opposition last month. That's why this case was deferred. Opposition has withdrew their request, or opposition, the applicant is requesting to extend the area being abandoned. You see on the screen, this line, I think you can see it, well, turn my pointer on. There's a line right here where the green and orange stop. That was the area requested last month. The opposition owns this property right here in the red. They wish to include that as part of this request, so staff would recommend approve the provision.
And I asked earlier, but just to make sure, is there any opposition present? All right, what's will the commission? We have a motion, and it has been properly seconded. Is there any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Yes.
Sorry to break our progress.
No, that's good.
But just want to thank staff and the opposition and landowner here. This is a good example of when people can get together and find, find a workable solution. So it's always, always good to see that. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
All right, the first item under new business is case 2025-0142, and this is located at 3612 Sumter Avenue, and staff is recommended to deny an applicant's request to rezone from RN-1-6 to RN-1-3. Is there any opposition present?
Mr. Chairman, we did, did, I think you have in front of you copies, a copy of a petition supporting the request. There's a couple signatures on there to support this.
Okay, and is the applicant present? Okay, and did I hear, when I asked if there was any opposition present, did I hear? Okay, you are here, okay. Mr. Schultz.
Sure, this is case 2025-142. This is a request to rezone currently piece of property zoned RN-16 to RN-13 for single unit detached residential. They wish to construct three single-family detached units with three ADUs on this property. Okay, you're saying they now took away the ADUs, but based on the application, did have ADUs listed. So it's three units, it's density of 620 years per acre, based on the size. Looking the zoning map, everything around this is on RN-16. There's been no recent zoning history for this property to the south of East Glen Street. You see there was a R1 PUD approved on that property, but there is no RN-13 near this, near this property. It's all large lot developments. This property fronts Sumter Avenue, which is a flag lot. The developer, you'll see in a minute, wants to subdivide off of, which is really the extension of Doolittle Street. Doolittle Street does not exist. It's actually a right-of-way, but actually no pavement exists at that location. So if this is approved to develop this property, the applicant will have to build a city street to city standards in, in Doolittle Street. Here's a view of the site. This is the existing single-family that's home of property. This is the driveway to that single-family in the very back. It's a flag lot, so you have two homes on either side of the flag lot. This is north of the site, which is a single-family dwelling. South of the site, single-family dwelling. This is east of the site, which is unopened Doolittle Street. This is Sumter Avenue. This property is one of our older plans, which is the Eastdale Plan from 98. It just, it recommends that a single-family development or dwellings, that they be carefully designed to fit in with the architectural standard of the neighborhood. So it doesn't really give much guidance in terms of land use plan, again, it's much older plan. As I stated earlier, this is the site plan submitted with a request. You see, this is a flag lot, they're using the existing flag lot for one home, two additional homes off Doolittle Street. Again, that's a right-of-way that exists, but no pavements there, so the developer will be required to build a city street for those two dwellings. The request for single-family dwellings is compatible adjacent land uses. However, the surrounding zoning is RN-16. The minimum lot size is 6,000 square feet with 55 feet of frontage. The RN-13 would introduce a new zoning pattern in the area, which is smaller, it'd be 3,000 square foot lot size with roughly 25 feet of frontage. So it's establish a new lot pattern in this area. Again, the applicant will be required to improve Sumter Street. Staff recommends the applicant consider constructing an ADU with existing home to get more density in the neighborhood while maintaining law compatibility in the neighborhood. So staff recommended to deny this request and just u- use the existing structure and use the ADU as an option.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Are there any questions for staff? Commissioner Highlander.
Has the applicant agreed to bring Doolittle Street up to standards at their cost?
They'll have to. I don't know if there's any agreement per se, they can maybe answer that, but they're, before, in order to get building permits in the city of Chattanooga, they'll, they will have to build a city street there to city standards.
Okay, thank you.
All right, we'll hear first from the applicant. Oh, yes, Mr. Maybe.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Schultz, under the current zoning, would they be able to get an additional lot on that?
No, because there's no frontage, and the lot size is 6,000 square footage, and then trying to subdivide this, you see that little flag lot that goes up to Sumter? That would not meet the RN-16 standards. It does for RN-13, so if they tried to subdivide on the current zoning, it would not meet lot size or frontage.
What, do you know what the lot size would be, or what the ones they're, they're proposing here on?
They're roughly over 3,000 square foot is what they're proposing, so it would meet the RN-13.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Schultz. Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, ma'am, here the applicant. Do you want to speak on this? Yes, come on up.
My name is Jamika Mobley. I am the owner at 3620 Sumter Avenue, and I'm requesting that the zoning be changed from the RN-16 to the RN-13. The current zoning does not allow for me to build two single-family homes on my lot, which limits the property potential. The proposed zoning would allow me to do this building and to create the street out of pocket, which aligns with the city's growth and the surrounding development that's taking place in District 5. So the surrounding properties are already zoned to be a multiple homes in our community, many the micro homes on Garner Street. So this change will be consistent with the neighborhood growth. I have spoken with several neighbors, and they have signed in support of this rezoning. They even came by my place of business that I now have located on Toner Boulevard. So the benefits would increase the property value, economic growth such as new business throughout the whole Toner Boulevard, even District 5 if possible, jobs, housing options in the area, and not to mention bring more academics to the kids in the neighborhood and the better schooling to the district. I only want to mention as well the elimination of light or underused land. So this zoning will allow us to redevelop the property, which will bring in new investment, create jobs, and increase the tax revenue for the city. We will have a better look in our community for wider streets if possible. If it gets too congested, sidewalks, trees to bring a nicer view to the District 5 area. It's been looking like that. I had my home built in 2004, and it's the same. It's no new development, nothing, nothing for the kids, the, they can't ride their bikes. We have no sidewalks. They ride down in the street, which is, you know, very unsafe. So I just want to bring something better in the area, you know, for the upcoming generation. It's been looking the same, so. I've considered the potential traffic impact and know that it would be a minimal since it's only two homes that would be built. So it's not like that street is going to bring a lot of traffic. It has to be a hammerhead street or turnaround. So it really would be like a, I guess, it's gonna be a street, but I don't know if it'd be like a private driveway street, I don't know. So I want to thank you for your time and your consideration, and I respectfully request that you approve of this rezoning.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you for your presentation, and thank you for building. Can I ask why you decided to remove the ADUs from your application?
Uh, well, I was told two weeks ago, I got an email saying that they did something wrong, so I can't put the ADUs on with the two houses that I'm trying to build.
Is it just a space issue? You, you just logistically don't have enough land the way you're doing the lots? Or did we tell you that you couldn't do it? We being the government?
We did. RN-3 doesn't allow ADUs, right?
Right.
RN-16, yes, she can do an ADU, but RN-13, she cannot do ADUs with that.
Correct.
I didn't know that.
Her original application was to do three single-family dwellings and three ADUs under the RN-13, and you can't do it under RN-13.
Okay. Look, let's discuss.
We forgot about that during our review.
Let's discuss that after we leave this meeting today. We may make that change.
No, the currently zoned, yes, she could put one ADU plus a single-family dwelling.
That's, that's probably worth going back and taking a look at for the next round of changes. Thank you. Thank you.
Okay, you're welcome.
Any other questions for the applicant? Right, I think you've got some folks here in opposition, is that right? Okay, would you all like to speak? Are you in support or opposed to it?
Opposed.
Okay, against, okay, thank you. Thank you, ma'am.
Okay.
We'll call you back up here in just a minute.
Okay.
I'm Barbara Starr. I'm the president of King Oak Subdivision. I have lived on Sumter Avenue for 50 years. We have, before I go into further, where are the community? Thank you. We are not, we in opposition of what she wants to do because of the development that's already going, going on in, on Sumter and Garner. We want to leave it as RN-16. We want to leave it there because of the safety of the community. Now, I don't know if you all noticed, there is a very, very small area there on the map that what she's talking about, putting that road. Our community is a quiet and developed establishment. Again, we have been there since 1974. The community is a growing and developing area. We oppose this because of the children and the safety of the community. That include Nimmick, Nimmick coming through there, I would say Nimmick, MacArthur, and all the surrounding areas there. We are not opposed about development. We want development, but what would it cost? What is the cost of this development? The children, the community. I ask you all to leave it as an RN-16 and not change it because there would be more and more things if we changed that area. We, like I told her in the meeting, we had a meeting with our community, and they said they liked. I have a, a small unit in my, on my, on my property. One, she's asking for three. That is what the application said, three. Then she changed it. Why? Because her property is not big enough to accommodate that. Why? Why do you want this to impact and to, your land is not big enough to put three houses plus the ADU, the small units? So I'm asking you all to deny this because of the safety and the structure of the roads there. I don't know if you've been down through Sumter Avenue. The cars, when they come down the hill, they come pretty fast, and then you're gonna bring in more and more development and changing the zone. She can do what she wants to do with the zoning that it is. I ask you all to deny this because of the, of the small development that is there. We don't care if she put one, that's fine. Two, that's fine, but to change the zoning? No, no, it's not safe. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Anita Baker, and I reside at 2417 Lee Encircle on the Hill in King Oak Subdivision. And I oppose it because we just gone through a roundup series. The past few months, if you know, they were trying to develop the 1,600 townhomes or whatever behind the subdivision. And the reason for that was it was denied. He withdrew it because of the infrastructure. And I'm here today to reference the fact of like, the flood that just happened in the area, in the basin of the hill, in the area over Doolittle, MacArthur, and Glen Court and all of that, it flooded out. and Glen Court and all of that. It flooded out. Some homes were just built there that got flooded out because of the rains. The infrastructure in Eastdale, which we are a part of, District Five, is, I want you to reference the Eastdale Plan from nineteen ninety-eight that was done by the Regional Planning Agency. And we were just in the process of coming together as a neighborhood to start pushing for the infrastructure that needs to be completed. I know now there are some plans in place that are gonna begin with putting in the sidewalks and widening the streets and filling in the ditches. They just came in and asphalted over Nimmicks, which flooded out and broke down since the flood happened back in August. And so I would ask that you deny it for reasons of anyone in the neighborhood remodeling, adding to building, doing anything in the community that's gonna cause more congestion because of the infrastructure and everything. And we didn't get an opportunity to speak with Ms. Mobley. Before she made her application, she didn't come to us or let us know what she was planning on doing. She did come to a meeting that we had this past Friday to address the situation, and it got a heated debate. We're not against progress. You know, we know that development is gonna come to the community, even with the tiny homes and other investments that are gonna happen in the future across the New United Church. But for the neighborhood, particularly for us to even move forward, any, anybody, any homeowner there, that infrastructure needs to be taken care of first. And I respectfully ask that you deny it again. And the answer for her is to basically get on board with us and help push for that, you know, redevelopment and infrastructure progress, and then we can go from there.
Thank you, ma'am. Councilwoman Burson?
Yeah, Brian, remind me, is she, are you saying two units? She can build two units on that property with what?
She can build, there's already a home there now. She can build an ADU on it the way it's zoned today.
Okay, but if it gets rezoned, the max she can build is two?
Three, depending on how big our lots are. You have to have three thousand square foot lot size and twenty-five feet of furniture, that new zone. I mean, this, this is just, it's just a sketch. I don't know if she can meet all the standards.
Okay, 'cause the diagram I'm looking at shows two, two houses, but you're saying it could be up to three?
Three with existing. Two with, two new and one with existing.
Okay, and then is, will the road be required to be a dead end or a cul-de-sac?
Uh, that'd be transportation. I'm sure they're requiring a cul-de-sac, some type of turnaround for fire trucks, emergency access. It has to be a full-blown city function.
But it won't be a through street?
No, it's the way it's shown now would be a cul-de-sac. Again, it dead ends into another cul-de-sac on the aerial map. You can see the top.
Okay, and then I have a question for the first woman that spoke about the first person in opposition that spoke. When you say the, do you mind coming back up, please? Thank you. When you said, when you referred, you referred a couple different times to the safety of the children. Tell me more about that, what your concern is.
My concern is when the kids get out of school, there's three stops that they make. And the last stop will be right there on Doolittle and right in front of the fire hydrant.
Okay.
Okay, and I forgot that we do have petitions from our neighborhood saying they do not want it. I have, I have them here. Again, we are not against progress. We are for that. We, we having it done now.
Sorry, sorry to interrupt. Was your question answered?
Yeah, one more quick question. What would you all be, because there's, there's some property there that's obviously developable, developable. What would you all approve or be in favor of? If someone were to develop that property?
Keeping the zone the way it is.
All right, and then I have a question for the applicant. Is your plan to, for those to be rental properties or to sell them? Okay, thank you.
Yep. Did you have a question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. I was just curious with Ms. Mobley and Starr. You all have talked, you mentioned that, and it, and what I heard you say that it kind of got heated. Is there no way possible you guys could go back again and maybe have another rational discussion? You're not far from New United, right?
Right.
Maybe get Dr. Wilson to come in there and mediate and work that thing out and come to some agreement?
As long as we not to be rezoned, that is the big thing that we're looking at, looking at. We don't want to be rezoned because of, we don't want that. Because we're in that neighborhood, that's, we have, I have, like I said, a small house, tiny house. There's two or three people that has, but why does she want to rezonate? That's, that is our problem. Why does she want to rezonate?
I just want to jump in. We've had an opportunity to hear from opposition. Thank you. Was your question answered?
Yeah, pretty much.
Okay, I just want to make sure that we don't rehash things we've already heard. Ma'am, you have an up. Yes.
She said she's trying to sell.
Come up to the microphone.
This is not what she said. She came to our meeting the other night. Again, she had never let us know what her plans was. She just saying now when she asked the question, she says she's trying to, she's gonna be selling the business. She told us at the meeting that she's trying to do that so she can move her family on her land with her, that she can be a resident in a community just like us. I shared with her my story years ago. My mother used to keep, boss to keep it, so we were trying to put some single-family homes on the lot. We have one of the biggest lot in King Oak, and it was denied. You all attended to do your studies, and you allowed us to put one ADU. In twenty-twenty-two, you changed, it was detached, now it can be detached. So it can be two single-family homes on the lots, RN one-six. This is the zoning that we have there, residential community, and that's the way we want to keep it. She lied. She's not, she's trying to come in and develop stuff.
Thank you, ma'am. Thank you. Mrs. Mobley, it's your opportunity to speak to what we've heard from my position. You've got two minutes.
I just wanted to state that the meeting that we had on Friday did not get heated. Everybody stated their opinions is what you do in meetings. Nothing ever got heated. I didn't lie about me selling. I have family members that are first-time homebuyers, and they want to buy, and they want to come on my property. So that's the best thing to, I'm gonna give my family the first option, you know, if they, you know, feel that the neighborhood is safe, it's better for their kids. So I never lied about, nobody ever asked me was I gonna rent or sell, you know? The first person that I had to go to was Dennis Clark. And he approved it. He said he sent notes in. I didn't have to go to, I never met these people in my neighborhood. I was told to get two signatures for the petition. I gathered five, and I was gonna gather more, the people that was for me. The new home that's built on Nimmicks, I talked to them, they are for it. That's the newest development in that area besides the micro homes. So the whole time I've been living here for twenty-four years, that's the only newly development off of Sumter Avenue on Sumter and Nimmicks. So what I'm just trying to do is create a better view and a better neighborhood for the children. I have children ride down the street. I talk to the little children. They don't have no sidewalks. They riding in the street. So we have to bring a better environment for the, the youth for the future. So that's all I'm trying to do, so.
Thank you, ma'am. Any questions for the applicant? Yes, Dr. Hollander?
Thank you, Chairman. Ma'am, you're, you're willing to develop Doolittle Street up to city standards and put a sidewalk on it? Is that, I understand you're wanting to put all that in?
Well, if I have to build a sidewalk, that's what I would do. But I was told that I had to build the street because it was in the plans years ago, and it didn't get developed. So they did tell me that I have to create the street, and it has to be a hammerhead or cul-de-sac for the emergency service to enter.
I don't have the building wisdom that a lot of the folks up here do. But I'm thinking, I know the cost factor, I know in the county is phenomenal. May I ask maybe Mr. Anderson what he thinks the cost would be and should be willing to bear that? Is that okay, Chairman?
Oh, yeah, for sure.
So right now.
What's the cost of that road gonna be?
Well, so I don't know how long this road's gonna be, but I can tell you right now.
I think it's three hundred and twenty-five feet.
So right now at the city, we're at a million seventy-seven thousand per lane mile. So this would be two lanes, obviously. It wouldn't just be one. So you'd be looking to double that and whatever portion that is of a mile. But it's easily a low-six-figures project that you would have to build and give to us to just build two houses.
Okay.
I was estimating a hundred and fifty thousand, but I may be wrong.
I think, I think you're.
Twice that.
Yeah, it's probably.
Three hundred thousand, okay.
Three or four, and then irregardless of whether or not a road is the city's or not, a new road has to capture and retain all the stormwater, which the site's too small for. I just want to be real honest with you. This drawing will never get built, irregardless of zoning. I just feel like we're having a ridiculously long conversation about a project that is not. It's not feasible. It's never gonna get built. I know it's your dream to want to do this, but the, the cost to build this road, put the stormwater in, which by the way, there's, there's not gonna be any lot left by the time you capture and retain all that stormwater. When developers build roads, they have to build all the city sewer, all the city stormwater, all the sidewalks, all the curb and gutter, all the street trees. I mean, this is, there's no scenario where this is financially feasible. This isn't financially feasible in any area of our city. So it doesn't matter whether this is St. Elmo or Riverview. You can't afford to build a city road for two homes. It's not possible. So I just, I just want to say that staff is recommended to deny it. The neighborhood's inherent in opposition. We're looking at a plan that is not financially feasible under any scenario. While it may be your dream to do it, it, I mean, I think some common sense needs to prevail here and now. What's the will of the commission?
Move to deny.
Second, and I have a point for discussion.
Sure.
Well, first a question for staff. She can put an ADU on it now, right?
Yes, I understand. Yeah, but it's currently zoned. She put ADU on it. I think there's a detached garage. Is there a garage on this property? So you could convert that garage to ADU.
And she doesn't have to, she doesn't have to build any kind of road to do that. Just put in the ADU as it is now.
Correct.
That's what I'd do if it were me, but it's not my place to tell you what to do with that. But that's absolutely what I would do if it was me. And I'll call a question.
We have a motion to deny. It has been properly segmented. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, ma'am. I think we would all applaud your desire to develop and the reasons for it. I think what you've heard from this planning commission is, I mean, we're, we're very pro-housing. Planning commission is very pro-housing. We know there's a need for it. In the opinion of this planning commission, this is not the place for it. And City Council's gonna take action on this next month, so this will go on to City Council. You'll, you'll have an opportunity to present this. This is a recommendation to City Council. So this, this is not necessarily a no. It's a recommendation. The City Council should not approve this. But I do want to just thank you for your desire to build housing in our city. It's needed. It's uncommon for us to take that position, but.
Okay.
It's what it is. Thank you.
Thank you.
You should reach out to Councilman Clark before the City Council meeting.
For next month? Am I able to attend that meeting as well?
Oh, yes.
Okay, okay, I will be here.
It's at City Council at one thousand Lindsay Street, just a few, a few blocks from here.
Okay.
Between tenth and eleventh on Lindsay Street.
Okay.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, can staff say something real quick while we still have a roomful of audience? There's an impact. We don't have any cases going to county next month. But in the handout in the back, for those watching, starting November fifth, I believe it is, the county commission has changed their meeting time to four o'clock. So moving forward for the months of November and December and first month in January, anything in front of the county commission starts at four and not nine-thirty. But it's reflected on our handouts in the back.
First meeting in January.
Thank you. Next meeting on our agenda is item two under new business. It's case twenty-twenty-five dash zero-one-four-four. This is located at twenty-eight zero-two Curtis Street. Staff has recommended to deny an applicant's request and approve other for an application to rezonate from RN dash one dash five to TRN dash three. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? All right, and are you familiar with the staff's recommendation? Can you come up to the mic? I just need a short and sweet answer from you. Are you?
Yes, sir. I'm familiar with the staff's recommendation. My only question is, it appears the staff's recommendation requires additional units be attached, and I was wanting to build detached. Other than that, I have no objection to the staff recommendation.
Mr. Schultz?
Sure. The, in this zone, which is TRN two, which staff's recommending, you can do up to six units on one lot, but it all has to be in one structure. The T, I think that's why he went to TRN three. He doesn't want those units in one structure. He wants multiple structures on one lot.
Two structures.
So in order to have four units, they have to be in one structure, the TRN two. TRN three allows multi-unit. We thought that was too much for this location. So that's why staff's recommended TRN two. Still got the same number of units. They just have to be in one structure versus multiple structures on one lot. And that's the quick overview of it.
Okay, thank you. I'd like to hear the staff presentation.
Sure. This is case twenty-twenty-five-one forty-four. This is a request rezoned from RN one-five, residential neighborhood zone to TRN three, traditional residential neighborhood zone. It's for two, two-unit structures, total of four units on this property. It's roughly zero-point-two-zero acres in size, four units. That's a density of twenty-two million units per acre. There's been no zoning history on this property, but to the south, but in this property that was rezoned to RN one-three in twenty-twenty-five, to the northwest of the property that was rezoned to RN, let's see, RN one-three in twenty-twenty-four. So you have RN one-three around this property, but not TRN three. You can see also to the east, there's industrial zoning and CC zoning. This property currently has one dwelling unit on it, which is a duplex. To the north is vacant land and single-unit residential. To the south is single-unit residential, and to the west is single-unit residential. And to the east is vacant property and industrial uses. Here's a view of the site from Curtis Street. That's the existing structure on the property, which is a duplex. This property does front an alley. It's not a city-maintained street. That is one of the problems of this request. In order to subdivide, you have to have frontage on a public street. This looks like a public street, but it's not. It's an alley. Here's another view of Brown's Alley. So this is north of the site, which is single-family dwellings. Another view, south of the site, single-family dwellings. This is east of the site, which is vacant land. This is west of the site, single-family dwelling. This is in the historic River to Ridge Plan, which adopted in twenty-twenty, which recommends urban residential, which is primarily single-family detached dwellings. It does allow two to four units per lot and cottage court development in this place type. Here's a closer view of the place type recommendation. This is the site plan submitted with a request. The picture on the left is the existing structure. The one on the right is what the applicant wishes to do, is again, two structures on that one lot with access to it off an alley. There's some questions in the zoning code that we have to answer. Is the compatibility of the proposed map amendment with existing and adjacent land uses? The TRN three zone permits high-density, multi-unit residential land uses of this location, which are not compatible with a single-family detached residential, but in this property, the proposed TRN three includes building height and density, which is not compatible with adjacent developer form. Again, there's no multifamily zoning near this property. There is some heavy industrial zone to the east of this property. Is the request consistent with the proposed map amendment with adopted land use and area plan policies? Again, the place type recommendation is, probably it was now, urban residential. The TRN three zone permits sixty-foot-tall Probably was now, urban residential. Um the TRN three zone permits sixty-foot tall buildings. Uh the TRN two limits the height to thirty-five feet, which is more appropriate with the area. Uh again, the TRN two zone permits two to six units on one lot, as long as you're in one structure. Uh this lot's roughly ninety-five hundred square feet in size, but it has enough area to build up to six units on one lot, based on. Uh I see below that, the lot size requirements in the TRN two zone. So staff recommend to deny the TRN three and recommend approve TRN two. Uh based on the plan and the existing lot size to create the number of units the applicant wishes, other just in one structure.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right. Now, please help us understand what you're wanting to do here.
Uh my, my current position uh is the one on the left, as as he stated. Uh that duplex has been fully remodeled, and I've currently got two units, uh two sets of tenants in it. Uh what I'm wanting to do is add an additional duplex in the rear. Uh my request was to. Have the addresses Brown's Alley for those units and front them toward Brown's Alley, though that can be changed. Uh that's not an issue with the, the, this, the commission's recommendation. I also intended to add uh off-street parking and uh to address a drainage issue coming from the uh adjoining lot. Uh with this, just to make it financially viable, I needed the extra units to address all that.
So then uh what we're looking at is the existing duplex, then there would be a duplex immediately to its right, our plan right. And then what, what's back there on Brown Alley? What is that?
The.
A small building that's on.
The building, the, the one on the left is the way, that one is the way the lot currently is.
Uh huh, but that's two units, right?
N- no, sir. The one on the left is the way the, the whole thing is the way the unit currently is. The one on the right is my intention.
Got you. Okay. What? Yes, so did I. I, I mean, that's what I thought.
I'm sorry for the confusion.
Yeah, the one on the left is an existing two-unit townhome.
Oh yeah.
Duplex, sorry.
Yeah, I I was confused, so.
So for both uh, so the one on the left, we're looking at is existing duplex. This is before and after. You got a duplex, you want two duplexes.
Yeah, yes, sir.
Got it. So that would be two additional duplexes?
No, sir, one additional duplex.
He's got one, he wants two, so. Before and after.
Yeah, we, we were.
It's at the bottom, the bottom of that picture, it says existing on left-hand side, and one on the right's proposed.
I thought it was both lots, because then in the aerial, it looked like that. I thought it was all one lot, and there was three buildings on one lot. Uh Mr. Law.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is there a particular reason that they have to be two buildings, two structures?
The main reason that I wanted the two structures instead of one is the current duplex is fully renovated. The renovations were completed back in February. I have tenants in both units there to modify that building and to add. Basically to join another building and build on to the back of that, I'm disturbing my existing tenants, and I really don't like to do that. Building an additional unit in the back allows them their quiet enjoyment.
Sure. I guess I'm just saying that there are times where a small roof line that connects to structures makes it qualify as.
If it's not approved, I will go that way.
Okay.
All right, do we have any opposition here?
All right.
What's the will of the commission?
Move to accept the staff's uh denial request.
And, and would that approve other?
TRN.
And approve the other.
Yeah, okay. So we have a motion to deny the applicant's request and approve other. In essence, the staff recommendation. And you seconded that. Any discussion? In favor, say aye. Oh, sorry, did you want to say something?
Just sorry, I just have a late question. Brian, what can he do now? Can, what can he build now on the property as is?
Basically what's there.
So he can't add another building on the back of that property?
I believe it's already one-six, right? It's already one-six, already one-five, so it's basically what's he can do there now. If you tear that structure down, build a single family or just maintain an existing structure, it's not conforming.
Okay, thank you.
All right. Motion carries. Thank you. Um next case on our agenda is item three. It's a mandatory referral, case twenty twenty-five dash zero one four-five, and this is located in thirteen hundred block of West Forty-Sixth Street. Staff was recommended to deny an applicant's request for a right-of-way closure and abandonment. Is there any opposition present? And is the applicant present? You are the applicant? Okay, got you. Yes. That's a double negative. Um all right, Mr. Schultz.
And we did receive one email, I think, in op, in support. I think they were across the street over here in support of this closure. Uh this is a request to abandon a, a, a right-of-way. Uh the reason with the request is to combine property uh to protect landscaping on the property. Here's aerial view, you can see everything abiding this property, single-unit uh development to the west and south, uh to the east is vacant property, and to north is vacant property. Here's a view of the right-of-way. I believe this is the landscaping they wish to protect by closing this right-of-way. Here's another view of the right-of-way and landscaping. Uh this is the applicant's property, the west side, who's actually requested to abandon the right-of-way. This is West Forty-Sixth Street and see single-family dwellings. Uh this is the area request to be abandoned. Uh this entire property, this alley does provide rear acts to, rear access to abiding properties if needed in the future. Uh this request did not meet the city of Chattanooga right-of-way abandonment policy adopted by the city. Uh again, this right-of-way can provide uh in the future access to six lots. If opened and improved, you can see that those lots abiding this property, so it could be used for access, particularly this property here off, I think it's Cali, Cali Road. Uh that's a very substandard road. In order to be developed, this would provide access to that lot if needed in the future. Uh the applicant, according to transportation department, did not provide enough information to demonstrate that the public has no further need or interest in keeping this right-of-way. Uh based on all that information, staff recommended to deny this request, and one of the main reasons again is provides rear access to potential six lots abiding this property.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions for staff? All right, we'll hear from the applicant first. Those that are here in opposition to the staff's recommendation to deny, which are our applicant.
Hi, um so we have some of our neighbors here.
Name and address for the record.
Oh, Yosef Yemen, uh four-five-two-zero Tennessee Ave. Uh so some of our neighbors are here, and I don't want to speak for them, but I think we all agree on this. Um no? Okay, so we're not all in agreeance on this. Uh but. Uh essentially, we, we are currently maintaining that uh right-of-way behind our property. And if it were to be developed, it would, because of the slope of the land to build a road there, it would encroach on. That shed that's in the picture, an existing structure. Which would be a bit uncomfortable for us to have to deal with that, but uh more so, we, since we're maintaining that land. We would just like to feel like we have some ownership and sort of stability, to know that the efforts we put into that space. Will not be erased if someone decides to build a road there. Um all of the adjacent properties do have access to the uh, to the backyards. Uh two of them are undeveloped, so the one in question that was mentioned that would potentially not have access, we spoke to the landowner. Uh she was neutral about it, uh didn't, didn't really, uh wasn't for or against it. Didn't seem like it would affect her too much, but it's currently undeveloped, so they can access the back of that lot. But primarily, we wanted to preserve that green space. We didn't really want a road running through all of our backyards. We wanted to be able, if we wanted to in the future, for instance, update the shed in the backyard, do that with peace of mind that there wouldn't be a road that would. End up conflicting with that space. Um and the shed would be on our property, but just because of the slope of the land, we're worried that if someone were to build a road there, it would conflict with the placement of the shed. Um we were a little bit concerned if there was a road there. We don't want. Like a dead-end road behind our house where people can park and. Just seemed like it would potentially make us feel unsafe if there was just a road to nowhere behind our house that was obstructed by some trees and stuff, and we don't really know what's going on there. We're not aware of any plans that would require opening and developing that easement. And to our knowledge, developing a road there would be cost prohibitive for us at least. I don't know about. All of our neighbors, but it seems like that would be an expensive endeavor to try to develop that road. Uh and just as a side note, all of our pets enjoy running around back there, so it'd be a little disruptive for them. Uh we thought that this would be in all of the neighbors' interest. I think that uh there's maybe some opposition to it, so. Uh I, I guess we may have been wrong on that front, but uh we just thought this would benefit everybody.
Thank you. Uh Mr. Anderson?
I have a, um, I have a couple of questions for you. So. The city has no plans to build this road, and I cannot imagine that we ever will. The city, the city government itself, I, I just, I know this area very well. I would be. Beyond shocked if the city went in and put in a city standard road for this small stub. Uh I, I think the people who own the property on Cali Road might have an interest in putting it in at some point, but you referenced your shed. Other people can't grade on your property just because they're building next to it, so if your shed is on your property.
It is.
Then it'll be fine. Now, if your shed is actually in this right-of-way, which happens sometimes because people don't know where the lines are, then your shed is not on your property, it's on the city of Chattanooga's property.
Okay, it, our shed is about two feet into our property.
Okay. Good, I'd like to hear from opposition.
Ma'am, did you want to say something? Make sure to introduce yourself for us if you.
My name is Randy Yemen. I'm the one who actually did the application, but my husband's better at speaking than I am, so I apologize. Um one thing to note in this picture in particular is the grade of that slope. That's why we're bringing up the concern about the shed. Is that they, you would have to fill in either up or demolish the slope within that, so that's why we're bringing that up. Um one other thing that I would like to note is that big tree has been there since the very first owner, which is Doris Kelly. And we've been trying to preserve it, which is part of preserving that green space, so thank you.
Thank you. Right, there are some folks here that are in opposition. Do you wish to speak?
Good afternoon. My name is Rachel Kelly McGraw. I am the homeowner of forty-five sixteen Tennessee Avenue. Um this alley goes into the back of my yard. I am currently living in that home with my husband and five children. It is a two-bedroom, one-bath home. I envision. One day to add maybe an ADU to this property. To generate some additional income. As we have just seen through the presentation this afternoon. Um it is hard to enter into the housing market. My husband and I don't necessarily. Make the income, so to speak, to be able to enter in as first-time homebuyers. I can tell you right now, we would not be able to afford a three-hundred-and-seventy-eight-thousand-dollar home. That home, which is a family home, my father is here, Matt Kelly, he has lived. In the St. Elmo area since birth, and he gave the home to me. And so now I have lived in that home since two thousand and seven. In that time, I got married. Had a blended family, four stepchildren and one of my own, and we're currently residing there. And I would love the opportunity to potentially expand on that property to meet the needs of my family. My father is not getting any younger. If I were to build an ADU there, he could possibly stay back there in order for me to take care of him. Um so I'm open to discussion. Just wanted to put that lens out there. Um Dad, did you want to add anything to that?
Uh no, no, not at this time.
Mr. Anderson?
Had a question.
So I'm guessing, looking at this, that both the slope that comes along with living on Tennessee Avenue. And uh how close is your, how close your house is to the existing side uh property lines? If you were to build an ADU, which we encourage everyone who can do to do, um you wouldn't be able to access it from the front driveway, would you?
No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
It would be difficult also to access it. From the front. There's not enough space on either side to build.
Yeah.
A driveway.
Yeah.
I'm sure. I grew up in the neighborhood and I, as a child, I remember there was complete access from forty-six. All the way over to forty-fifth with that alley. And there's, there are adjur, uh there are other alleyways. Uh that are actually connect you all the way down to Ford's Hill Cemetery. I'm not gonna tell my age, but again, I do remember. How those alleys would uh connect, so to close it all, and she has desires for future growth. I think would be uh not the appropriate thing to do.
Yes.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair. Uh question, Brian, or for, I guess, Brian, is it currently alleyway, it's just overgrown?
It, it's a, it's a city-owned right-of-way. Just looks like there's some overgrowth in it. I'll go back to the pictures. They can maybe speak better than I can, but here's the right-of-way through here.
But can you drive on it?
Everywhere there, but it's just.
You can't drive on it now, so a road would have to be created if somebody were to.
Yes, if she wanted to put an ADU in it, she'd have to work with the city to get some kind of access back there.
Okay, thank you.
If it's closed, it's, you couldn't do that.
Correct, thank you.
Well, I, I mean, I, I'll just say that if she wants to build an ADU on it, she doesn't have to build access to the.
Oh sure, yeah, that's true.
If she wants to, if she wants to access her property tomorrow, she can access it tomorrow, irregardless of what's, I mean, especially for the construction, you know? Mr. Anderson?
I was just gonna say the same thing, Chairman, that you don't have to construct a bit of road to put an ADU in the back. We'll give you a building permit tomorrow for that.
And you can use.
Enthusiastically for more ADUs. Yeah, and you can use the, right, you can use the alley for just access, as long as you have road frontage in the front, you don't have to pave the back. You'd have to do a little work to get, to get a car through there, but that'd be up to them. It wouldn't be to any city standard for like a paved road or anything.
All right, did anybody else want to speak in opposition?
Hey, one good thing I want to say.
Sure.
I'm not, my name is Curtis Brooks.
Can you come up to?
Process of uh purchasing uh a lot on Cali Road, which joins that alley. And I'm really not a hundred percent sure what uh alley abandonment entails in its entirety, but. Uh if it's gonna affect me being able to get to this property, I would like to know before I dive deeper into it. We're actually um. At the title company now, working out the specifics, so that's my reason for being here.
Okay, thank you. All right, as the applicant, you have an opportunity to come up and uh you've got two minutes to respond to what you've heard from opposition.
I would just like to apologize to y'all. I didn't realize there was gonna be opposition, or we would have talked it through before coming here. When we, when we applied for it, we didn't realize there was gonna be opposition. Um I wasn't sure where things landed, so now I know. Um I, I understand what y'all are trying to do. We, we don't really have any issue with that. Uh we prefer that there wasn't a road behind our house. And thought that this would be a good way to uh ensure that. If there was some other agreement we could come to, like just allowing y'all to access the back without necessarily building a road, we're fine with that. Uh we, we would still prefer to uh close the easement if possible, but we don't want to limit anyone's. don't want to limit anyone's ability for future growth.
Thank you. All right. What's the will of the commission?
Second.
We have a motion to deny, and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion?
Yeah, I just wanted to say one thing about the maintenance of that alley. I want to thank you all for taking care of it while it has been public and taking care of these shared public spaces that are somewhat forgotten is a laudable thing. I mean, I really want to thank you all for that, and I hope that everybody here can kind of work together to make sure that continues to happen, especially now that everybody is aware of all of the interested parties trying to work together to continue that maintenance and that improvement of that public space, I think is great for the neighborhood. So, thank you all.
First of all, Mr. Chairman, ma'am.
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just want to say exactly, I think it is important that we all chip in to maintain these, I've always called them paper streets that are all over, all over our city. And also just kind of want to reassure you, and I believe Commissioner Anderson had mentioned it, I think the chances of a road, every actual road being behind your house are extremely slim. So, you know, you never, you never say never, but I think more, more likely would be an alley or something like that.
When was the last time the City of Chattanooga built a road? Like, I mean, from scratch?
We build roads every year, first of all.
From scratch or improve or widen them?
We, we, well, I'll tell you, this administration has been building roads, but it's, but it's a fraction of the roads that are built. For, most people don't know this, so you've teed it up quite nicely. Most of the roads are not built by the government. They're built by developers who are putting in new development, and that's how roads get built. If it wasn't built that way, then taxes would be much, much higher. So, we've got a lot of roads that would be ahead of this, hundreds that would be ahead of this before we would see the public need to put in a full road behind this. There's, there would be no justification whatsoever for the city to build this road.
All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next case on our agenda is case twenty-two-five-zero-one-four-seven, and it's located at nine-fifteen Barton Avenue. Staff has recommended, recommended to deny an applicant's request and approve other for a rezoning from RN-two to CN, Commercial Zone. Is there any opposition present? Is the applicant present? Okay. Can you come up to the microphone?
Hello?
So we have a staff recommendation to deny your request and approve other. Are you familiar with this recommendation?
Yes, I am.
And do you have any thoughts on it?
Yes, I do.
And are you okay with the staff recommendation or no?
Not really, but I would like, I would love to plead my case.
Okay, fantastic. Let's hear the staff presentation first. So just sit tight for just a second.
Okay.
And then you'll have the opportunity to do that.
Okay.
Okay, this is twenty-two-five-one-four-seven. This is a request to rezone from RN-two residential neighborhood zone to CN, neighborhood commercial zone for personal service, use, retail and residential. It's roughly zero-point-one-five acres in size. If you do one single-family dwelling, that'd be one unit that's a density of six dwellings per acre. There's a mixture of zones in this area. You have CNT, CMU-one, and CC, as well as RN-two. There's been no zoning history on this piece of property, but to the north, that CMU-one was actually zoned UGC back in twenty-twenty-one, and to the east of this site, that was rezoned from C-five to UGC with conditions back in twenty-nineteen, which is now CMU-one. This is an existing single-family dwelling. To the north, these are all single-family dwellings with commercial uses in those dwellings. You have an office to the east, and then a commercial to the east, and to the west is single-unit residential, and to the south is single-unit residential and a park. Now, this is the view of the site from Barton Avenue. This is the view of the site from office parking lot. This is rear parking lot on the site. This is the park that's south of the site. This is east of the site, which is the office. And this is west of the site, single-family dwellings. This is looking down Barton Avenue. You see, it's all single-family dwellings in this location. Here's the site plan submitted with a request. You see, all these properties here, again, are single-family dwellings, but they're used as commercials, some type of small commercial business, except for this office and commercial here, and everything to the west is residential. Same question as we asked earlier. This site is located in a neighborhood node with a mix of land uses, including commercial, restaurant, bar, office, park, and residential uses. The request would be compatible with those adjacent land uses. The advocate requested CN zone, which permits non-residential uses such as liquor stores, lodges, retail goods, establishments, outdoor sales and displays, animal care facilities and funeral homes that may not be compatible with adjacent single-family dwellings that are to the west of the site. Again, this site's surrounded by a mixture of zones from CMU-one, CN, and CNT. There is CC property to the northwest of the site. The CN and CNT zones have maximum gross floor area square footage requirements to limit massing of the buildings, which would be more compatible RN-two zones. The requests for personal service and residential uses are compatible with adjacent land uses. One of the keys was the difference between CN and CNT. The CNT zone permits less intensive commercial uses that what, which will also serve as a buffer between those single-family to the west and the commercial uses to the east and north. So with that being said, staff recommend to deny the CN and approve CNT because again, it has less intense commercial uses and will also serve as a buffer between those single-family dwellings. So staff recommend to deny. The applicant's request and approve CNT.
Mr. Schultz, the, the business that the applicant desires to operate in that home, would they be able to operate that business in the?
Yes. We, we discussed this as a staff. All of her requested uses would be allowed to happen in this, in the CN zone. And we have a, this case brought about some discussion, and one of the items on the agenda today is to amend the zoning code to allow like a, one single-family unit in this dwelling as well, if it was to be used as an office.
Thank you. Any other questions for staff? Mr. Lyle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. You did say that under CNT, all of the requested uses would be allowed?
Correct. That's what we discussed, yes.
Okay.
Because I think the applicant doesn't really have any, she has a use in mind, but it may switch back and forth where somebody's living there. It may also be a personal service establishment. There's not really clear yet on the desired use for this property. Maybe she can speak to that.
Okay, yes. I was on thirteen oh-nine Hanover Street. I am being, have been a business owner, alteration design for eight years there. The owner sold the business property from underneath me, so that is why I'm in this position. I had the opportunity to purchase one, nine-one-five Barton Avenue, which I will carry out my same business. I have alteration design in business. The issue arrived is when I was on nine-one-five, when I was on thirteen oh-nine Hanover Street, I was paying eighteen hundred dollars a month rent. Now I am in Barton, nine-one-five, my payment for the month is three thousand two hundred. Two, three thousand six hundred. He helped me with the bills. Now we know. So, all I'm asking, the panel here, is to give me the permission, if I want to open a coffee shop at the back or something, to create added, added revenue. That's all I'm asking. Not, I, I do not want to run a bar. Make it, that's all I want. And my husband here, who is standing, he's on disability. I am the sole breadwinner. He do not work. I support everything.
Commissioner Hyland?
Thank you, Chairman. Brian, the current, the use that she wants, if we, if we deny as is, but approve the other, she could do what she wants right now, correct?
I'm checking. I don't think she can do the restaurant.
Okay.
The coffee shop.
Wonderful.
Okay. What I'm concerned, if she can do this, I'm concerned if she sells it, it could go to something that's not compatible with the neighborhood.
Correct. Correct. That's what, that's what we looked at, not just this current owner, somebody in the future. If that CN, CN zones there, all those uses could be placed in this property.
And perhaps she might not do this, but some future owner might if it's already zoned. Thank you.
Councilwoman Burris?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So Brian, can she, can she operate her alterations business and then rent part of the, the other space as a, an apartment or something like that?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Any other questions for the applicant?
And we just checked, just the, the coffee shop or restaurant would not be allowed in, in this other zone.
Is that one designation? Are those not separate in any way?
No. There's the, CNT or CN doesn't allow those, oh, sorry, CN doesn't. CNT.
Coffee shop or restaurant, those are not separated in any way in the use table?
No, no.
Interesting.
I always get confused, CN, CNT. There's a lot of questions coming here.
What's the will of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, if I may, I'm just trying to, trying to get a feel for what may be the, the proper zone here. I know there are some like coffee shops, like little sandwich shops right there in that area. What, what is the zoning of those, and would that be an appropriate, appropriate zone that would allow for both her uses?
Those, looking at the zoning map, those would have been CC, which would have been CT, and the, the CMU-ones would have been UGC back in the day, and probably had conditions on them, maybe in their uses.
They were kind of grandfathered in from?
Yeah, they have the new zones too. They would have transitioned over to the CMU-one. Those conditions would have carried over. Whatever conditions though UGC had, those conditions would have carried over.
Would, would CMU-one with conditions on this property be appropriate?
I don't know. Well, I'm.
I'm sorry to put you on the spot. I know y'all have, may not.
I'm sure it would, but I don't know what conditions that would be. CMU is more of a mixed-use zone, has a lot of range of uses, and I think setbacks would probably work here. Without looking at it, it's so hard to tell on the fly here.
Well, CMU-one also has an eighty-five-foot building height. It's meant to be more for our downtown kind of infill areas. The CMU-ones that were here now have height conditions, so CN with conditions might be more appropriate than even higher intense zone. That's one of the highest intense mixed-use zones that we have now.
I will say, y'all don't see the staff report. We do as a staff. We discuss all these scenarios back and forth before we land on a staff recommendation. So, great questions, but we've had the same discussions already.
I, I'll just say, I, I agree with y'all that, that as requested, that zone is inappropriate for that area. I do think what she's trying to do there is probably appropriate for that area, though. So I, I just would love to find a way to make that happen and coordinate somehow, and I almost wonder if it's a, one of those times where we can defer this and give them some additional time to work with staff to come up with conditions in a proper zone, unless another commissioner has a better idea. Mr. Anderson, if maybe?
I, I, I'd like that idea. I mean, I think this particular intersection and this little wedge of land over in this part of town is a really nuanced question, and I can understand the amount of discourse that staff would have had over coming up with the recommendation. I mean, you know, this, you, you, right next door, you've got the Rosecomb, which is one of the, you know, like latest open dining establishments in town. So, you know, I, I don't have as much of a heartburn with opening the door in, I think, one property over, probably, because I think that street kind of transitions to more residential, right, I mean, you've got, you, what is the, what's the, where terrace is kind of coming in on the edge of the city-owned park there. You know, it, this is probably the last property within that little corner that would, at the current moment, make sense for this, but if deferring gives enough time to come up with the right
Right.
set of, of conditions to put on it, I, I would, I would support that.
Thirty days?
Yeah.
Mr. Anderson?
It, it seems like the will is to defer, so that's going to be my motion in a second. I also would be willing to make a motion to approve, and I'll explain why. Through no, through no action of anyone in this room right now, I, I would predict that within three to five years, there will be no one living on this block, because of the moves that I've seen internally at the city on Barton Avenue and Hickson Pike, just in this general area, like just at, at the, the north end of this map, the CN and the CC, like that has seen some recent development. Rosecomb is growing and, and popularity, and, and there's, you know, a shopping center with a drugstore across the street to the east on the other side. So I, I don't see that preserving this as single-unit residential is, is something that is a high priority, because the market will dictate that it won't be that in a few years, is my guess. I do think that CN makes more sense on this parcel, Commissioner maybe, than CMU-one. My favorite zone, CMU-one, with the least restrictions that we want to see more and more with the mixed use. I don't know that CMU-one is appropriate for a, a lot this size next to housing. I think the CN, which is to the northwest of this property, would tell you that CN works in this area, but in the interest of having more discussion about this, I'd like to move to defer thirty days.
Second. Well, yes, we have a motion to defer for thirty days, and it has been seconded. I want to make sure we understand what, what we're asking for to happen in the next thirty days, and I'm not exactly clear on what that is, but I do want to raise one concern, and that is that I live in an urban area where we have a commercial in close proximity to our home, and there are just realities around how commercial operates in terms of everything from lighting to parking to hours of operation or dumpster services that need to be contemplated because there is, I think, probably a person living right next door to this property, and I don't, I don't see them here in opposition, but it's still ours to give consideration for the impact of those changes. I'd like to see those addressed if, through conditions or something along those lines.
It's my hope, Chairman, in the next thirty days, that staff and the applicant will work together to determine what combination of CN, CNT, CMU-one, CMU-two, we have not talked about, but that might work also with a lower height restriction, what combination of that and conditions can meet what your needs are to support your family and use your property to the best of its benefit, but also not encroach on the neighbors. So it's, it's my hope that this deferral will give you thirty days to do that before we send you to city council.
To that same question, I was gonna, there's already a motion on the floor, but I was prepared to make a motion to approve with use conditions essentially taking the, I mean, in the staff report specifically, it mentioned animal care facilities, liquor stores. There's one more, you know, things that might not be appropriate in this area, putting some use restrictions on it and just moving ahead with CN, I think seems reasonable to me, but there's already a motion on the floor, so we'll.
We have a motion to defer for thirty days, and it has been properly seconded. Mr. Lyle?
Well, there's, I mean, there's a time window between here and city council. I mean, if we come to, can come to a consensus that moving it on without a deferral for thirty days, and there's enough time to work those things out between here and city council, then we could vote down the deferral on the floor and just move it along. I would be in favor of that.
I, I, I would prefer for us to send it to city council with the conditions having been vetted here. And, and, and I think we would all value the input of staff in regards to what those need to look like, and I think it's far better when staff helps us with those conditions than we just come up with them on the fly, because I think they can be hard on LDO and staff to interpret what it is we had in mind. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Did you want to say something? Sorry, I missed that.
Um, have you spoken to Chairwoman Hill?
Yes, I did.
You have? Okay, good. I, I would encourage, I was going to say, if you hadn't, now would be a good time to also talk to her so she can be part of helping establish those conditions, because I'm sure she knows the neighbors as well.
Yes.
Nick, thank you. Do you know what we just did? We deferred the case for thirty days. Reach out to staff and work through what that could look like. So we're going to hear it again next month.
Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you, sir. Thank you.
Next case on the agenda is item five. It's a mandatory referral case twenty-two-five-zero-one-four-eight. It's located in the two-hundred block of North Orchard Knob Avenue. It's for a right-of-way closure. Staff has recommended to deny the applicant's request and approve other. Is there any opposition present? Okay, and is the applicant present? Okay. Mr. Schultz?
This is MR twenty-two-five-one-four-eight. This is a request to abandon two rights-of-way. One is actually an alley right-of-way, and the other one is the old Chattanooga Beltway line. You see on the screen the difference between those two. The purpose of this is to combine property for development for single-family dwellings, and the, the green is the budding property. And the, the green is the, uh, budding property owners who own swap. The applicant is here between the alley and this belt line. Uh, the Hughes, Somers, Jones, and Woods, and, uh, I guess it's Fleur owns the budding property. So the applicant is here in the middle, and everything in front of you is different property owners. Again, this is two, uh, this right of way, large right of way, again, was the right of way that was owned by the Chattanooga Beltway, which is closed and given to the city. So it's railroad right of way in theory. Uh, this is alley right of way to the north. Abutting this property is single family dwellings. I think the applicant wishes to abandon both of these, uh, so it will make this lot more buildable. Cause it's an irregular shaped lot as it stands today. Here's a view, view of the railroad right of way. This is the alley right of way going between this fence here. This is north of the alley and the right of way. This is the south of railroad right of way. Again, back to the site plan, this is the applicant's request to ban these two rights away. Uh, the request to close, to close the railroad right of way, the belt line meets the city, meets the city of Chattanooga right of way closure. Abandon this railroad right of way, uh, will allow approximately three thousand two hundred square feet, uh, to be added to this triangular shaped piece of property, make it more buildable. Uh, the request to close this alley right of way does not meet the policy, it's because it can provide rear access to some of the budding lots. Staff recommends to leave that open, uh, but to, uh, approve closing the belt line right of way, but deny closing the alley right of way. Because the alley again provides rear access to those budding property owners.
Thank you, Mr. Schultz. Any questions?
Sir, yes.
We also had two emails.
If we close the Beltway right of way, will it just go to that particular property owner? How about the property owner on the other side?
It typically goes, it typically goes jointly on both sides, uh, but the title attorney would have to settle that. It depends on where it originally came from, but typically it goes equal distance between both the budding property owners. But you gotta see where it originally came from, what tract of land.
Okay, okay. You don't know what tract of land?
No, that'd take a title attorney to research all that.
Okay, okay. I, if, all other things being considered, I think each property owner would have equal rights to that Beltway. Thank you.
All right. Is the applicant present? You're, you're the applicant? Come on up.
Hello. My name is Yenokos. Yeah.
Your address?
My address is seven two five five Lee Highway.
Okay. And, uh, you've seen the staff recommendation. Uh, the staff recommendation is to abandon, uh, the piece there in the middle. The, that was from the railroad and deny the, um, request that you have to abandon the alley. Are you okay?
I'm agree with that.
Okay, fantastic. Let's hear from the opposition if you, if you don't mind, and then maybe give you an opportunity to respond to that. If you're here in opposition, you'd like to speak in regards to this case, come on up to the mic.
Hi there. My name is Calvin Floor. Uh, I live at nineteen oh one Vine Street. Um, yeah, so, um, we live in the, uh, property south of the Beltline. Um, yeah, we agree with the closer coding of the Beltline. But, uh, agree with y'all not to close the alley. Um, provides a lot of access, um, for all neighboring, I believe there's six families, right? Use it's used daily, um, from multiple families and, um, uh, yeah, I don't think it would be, uh, kind of acceptable to close that and let, uh, be more, uh, building on it because it would densify the area and then kind of set a precedent throughout the neighborhood that, um, can buy up these alleys and, uh, make it more of a populated neighborhood.
Thank you.
Good afternoon. My name is Johanna Woods Moten. I'll just share with everybody what I wrote. I, Johanna Woods Moten kindly and humbly request that M R two oh two five dash oh one four eight or the alley behind nineteen oh five Vine Street, which is where my family lives, remains public property for residents to utilize for driving purposes. We, the Woods family, have to utilize the alley to access our backyard for parking. Due to the location of gas lines in the front of our yard, we cannot have a driveway for parking in the front of the house. Our mother, um, she is fairly newly widowed. Our dad passed in, uh, December twenty twenty-three. Our mother requires round the clock care. We want to be able to access the backyard as parking is a challenge at times in this historic community. We would also like for this community to remain historic with no questionable structures as space is limited. We grew up in historic Orchard Knob. Uh, we value it as precious. We take pride in being native Chattanoogaans, and we want to continue to be a part of the healthy growth and positive changes that have occurred in the Orchard Knob community. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
Hey, my name is Jeff Brown. I'm at nineteen oh six Ivy, so I'm right at the edge, so I use the access to actually get to my backyard. Um, I formally oppose the proposed change for alley closure abandonment submitted under this case zero one four eight. The petitioner claims the alleyway in question located by our home and railway part is unused and therefore qualifies for abandonment. This assertion is not, and is only inaccurate, but disregards the longstanding and ongoing community use and maintenance of this alleyway. For over seven years, um, myself and several others of our immediate neighbors have actually maintained this alleyway for mowing, clearing debris, weeding, and ensures it remains accessible. Beyond the upkeep, the alleyway serves as a critical access to the rear proportions of multiple properties, including our own. It functions as more than just a passage. It is an integ- integral part of our neighborhood's infrastructure and connectivity. Approving this petition, this petition would set a troubling precedent in our area, in our neighborhood. The out of state investors or developers that know, have no local ties or long-term interests in the community can claim historically and functionally significant places for personal development, regardless of our community usage or impact. This only uses, or not only undermines the rights and efforts of the current residents, but also threatens the integrity and planning consistency of our neighborhood. I would say the planning agency is to support development that benefits the community, which we're all for, uh, but not development that disregards it. Allowing this petition to proceed would signal the private interest can only override community cohesion, establish use and stewardship. So for those reasons, we respectfully request that the application for abandonment be denied. And we urge a planning agency to stay in with long-term residents, protect the utility access and character of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, sir.
I, I forgot to mention the, uh, applicant's property was sold, um, on auction a few months ago. Um, we were part of that auction. Uh, I'll bid then, uh, went to, and, and ended up going to somebody else. They defaulted, came to us. Um, we didn't want to stick with the current price, so then it went, we denied going with the high price that we, uh, bid at. It went to the current applicant. Um, and we've been in discussion with them to buy it from them. Uh, the agreement has been presented to them numerous times, uh, but we haven't had it returned. So there is, there's kind of two routes, uh, going by the applicant. It seems to get this alley and, um, and build on the larger property. But, um, there's also a solution here for us to buy it from them, but we have not heard back from it. Um, with our agreement being sent to them numerous times already.
Okay. Thank you. Can the applicant come back up? Come back up. The alley is clearly in use by your neighbors. You see that, right?
Yes.
Okay, and so, um, this body needs to make a motion, and I think you'll understand why based on what we've heard.
Can I, can I say something?
Please.
Yeah. Oh, this property is actually fenced by, by the next neighbor. It's completely fenced. And nobody's been using that access at all. It's fenced as of.
Uh, you're, you're referencing the Beltline piece?
No. Yeah, yes, yes.
Okay, yes, we understand that.
Yeah, yeah. They completely fenced it, so nobody's using this at all.
Okay. Mr. Maybe?
Thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, it, it sounds like everybody's on the same page from the opposition and the, and the landowner here. So I, I, I would, and I think the, the staff made the appropriate recommendation to, to deny the, the top end alley, but close the Beltline. So my motion would be to approve, uh, staff recommendations.
We have a motion and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Ma'am, did you want to say something?
No.
Okay, thank you. All right. Item six on our agenda, case twenty twenty-five dash zero one four nine has been withdrawn. The next case on our agenda is item seven, case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five one. This is located at thirteen zero five Anderson Avenue, and it's an application to lift condition of ordinance number one three five seven six and has a staff recommendation to approve. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The next case on our agenda is case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five two, and this is located at two thousand three Wilcox Boulevard. And it's an application to rezone from R N dash one dash five to T R N dash three. Staff has recommended to approve with conditions. Is the applicant present? And have you seen these staff conditions? And are you okay with those? Okay. We do have, I think, opposition here. Uh, that's, thank you. Ma'am, this is the case I think you were wanting to speak in regards to earlier. Do you want to speak in regards to this? Okay, come on up. It'd be helpful to hear from you first and then, and then maybe we can tailor the staff presentation.
Thank you for this opportunity to speak with you on this matter. My name is Monique Hampton. I live at, and I'm the homeowner at fourteen ten Roanoke. First of all, it came as a little bit of a shock, but, um, uh, my situation is this. As of next year, I will, I'm a single woman, and as of next year, I will pay off my home in full. I'm also a caregiver to my mother who is ninety years old, and her plan was to, that would be her last stay. She started the home with my grandparents, so it was like a family home. Um, the property next to me, the church has been abandoned for decades. Um, it's been abandoned by church members because they didn't want to fix up the property. It has asbestos. So if they tear down this property, it puts me, my mother, and other neighbors in harm's way. It's a danger.
Ma'am, um, so in, in regards to this case, um, you know, it's a zoning case, so what the applicant wants to do is change the zone. We don't know whether or not the applicant intends to demo the building, but I can assure you that if it has asbestos.
Yes.
Which it may very well have.
Yes.
And, um, he gets permits to demo it. He's gonna have to abate the asbestos to protect any neighbors while it's being demoed. So the, the concern that you have, I think, is valid, but I want to just give you assurance that, uh, the city of Chattanooga will not issue a demo permit without having asbestos, uh, abatement first, if it's there.
Okay.
Yeah, absolutely. That's, uh, of the highest concern to Hamilton County and the city of Chattanooga.
Okay.
Do you have any opposition to the zoning in particular?
Well, uh, I want to understand what he wants to do with it.
Okay, let's, let's hear that. That's fantastic. We'll, we'll have him come up.
Okay.
Good afternoon. Gary O'Brien with LaBella Associates here in Chattanooga. Uh, yes, we are, I understand the comments and we're in agreement with the cons, we're, we're not in, we're not, uh, fighting those. We, uh, we understand, uh, what they are of. I'm, I'm looking at the layout here. We, uh, I think we initially wanted to propose ninety units, and we've reduced that to sixty, I think, and, uh, four story maximum. Uh, so all those requirements we intend to meet, I, I don't know from client yet what they intend to do in terms of demolition or no, I'm, uh, not sure. But we do understand the regu- the requirements as we move forward.
That's helpful. Any other questions for the applicant? What's the will of the commission?
Those are approved with conditions.
We have a motion to approve with conditions, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Next case on our agenda is item nine. It's a mandatory referral. It's case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five three. And this is located at eight thousand one Volkswagen Drive, and, uh, the staff has recommended approval of a public sewer easement closure and abandonment. Is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to approve, and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you all. Next case on our agenda is item ten. It's case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five four. It's located at thirty-nine seventeen Blanchard Street, and staff has recommended to defer and applicants to request to rezone from R N dash one dash six to R N dash one dash three. Is the applicant present? Probably because y'all recommended deferral.
Yeah, I'll let you hear for that.
Yeah, is there any opposition present? What's the will of the commission? We have a motion to defer for thirty days and it has been seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. Next case on the agenda is item eleven, case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five seven. It's been withdrawn. Next on our agenda is item one. It's mandatory referral case twenty twenty-five dash zero one five zero. And this is located at sixty-nine fifty-four Robinson Drive, and, um, staff has recommended to approve mandatory referral property acquisition. Is there any opposition present? We have a motion to approve and it has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. And then we have a resolution and amendments. Um, item one here is a resolution to amend Chattanooga City Code Part Two, Chapter thirty-eight, Chattanooga zoning regulations to amend various sections in new Chapter thirty-eight, Chattanooga zoning regulations adopted by ordinance number one four one three seven on July twenty-third, twenty twenty-four. Mr. Schultz?
Sure, I'll answer what I can here. Uh, we meet every week with, uh, uh, L D L and Development Services team, and we, as you know, we bring, bring amendments every month. These are some things we're bringing for you today. The first amendment is regards to zoning map interpretation. On those zoning maps, if you look online, we always zone every piece of property to the center line of streets. But to make it more readable, we don't, uh, show on the maps anymore the zoning lines to the center line of the streets. It's just the parcels. So we try to clarify, when public right of way or private right of way is abandoned, the new zone boundary line is the center line of that former right of way. So it's clear those zones extend out. Uh, the second amendment is, um, originally in the zoning code, we had that, um, for residential dwellings, you must have your primary entrance from a facade facing the street. Uh, that was removed. Uh, we thought that was a little too much at the time, but since that time, we have a home being constructed in Lookout Valley to where, from the public right of way, you see the rear of the home, and it's causing, uh, some issues, uh, within, with, uh, Land Development Office in terms of nine one one access to the property. So we're putting back in that language that all residential dwellings must have a primary entrance from a facade facing the street. Part to identify a clear and reliable access point to enter a building for emergency response. The fu- front entry must be a dominant feature on the front elevation of a home and an integral part of the structure using features such as porches, raised steps, and stoops, or visible front door to articulate, articulate the front facade. Um, I was going to show a picture of where this structure is being built to show you what that. I was going to show a picture of where this structure is being built to show you what that looks like.
Sorry to interrupt. We're looking at a list like this, right, of one through, is it, is that what we're looking at?
It should be an ordinance amendment. That ordinance thing, the one through five, is the previous amendments we've done.
Okay, and
Should be on the back.
Okay, sorry. I was just trying to track with you.
Yeah, sorry.
And so then what zone would that apply to? All zone?
All residential, all, any residential structure. Any zone allows residential, you have to have primarily RN one, six, RN one five, and RN one point seven five.
So what what do you do in the event that there's a horizontal property regime, and homes are not facing the public right of way because they're facing interior elements or cottage courts?
That would be, this would be a minor interpretation. This would be on individual lots, because what you're talking about would be multi-unit development. Or along the ones along the road itself. Interiors would be exempt. I don't think that there's a rush on this, if we need to come back with something to clear it up. If you think that's a concern about how HPRs work. Would only apply, not to HPRs. They're multifamily, multi-unit. So that's how we define HPRs now, as multi-unit.
But there are also times where I I just struggling with the times where there's a Udoa Ringgold Road, and there's a new neighborhood built on the other side, and they're addressing them off of an existing road, but they're putting some sort of I I just want to make sure
I got your concern.
doing this, we're not preventing developers from being creative, and
I tell you what, can we maybe strike this for now? Let us come back. I was going to try to get, I reached out to Darian's team. They they're trying to get back, show you a picture where this is happening, but I know what you're talking about. You're going along Udoa Ringgold Road, all you're seeing is the back of the homes. This would force them now to face it, the exact opposite of that.
Sorry, in the intent, the intent of this is not to, we we did talk about cottage courts and HPRs, and that this would not be something that was a a regulation for those types of developments, and additionally, you, the, what you're talking about would still face a street. It's just not necessarily the street, one of the streets. We have a home that's being constructed where it's not facing any street whatsoever. It's actually, the front door is facing another lot that's behind it, and the back is facing a street. And so that is what we're looking at.
I hear, I hear that, but who cares? I'm just, I mean, I'm saying this is ugly. I I don't know who's building it. Maybe it's ugly, maybe it's not ugly. It's silly, for sure, but I mean, outside of the fact that it's really maybe I don't want to say who cares if, I mean, the fire department's gonna find the front door, right? They're gonna find a door.
Speak for staff, but I believe that's why we took this out the first time.
So what's driving putting it back in?
Because somebody actually is building one now. Let's be honest, somebody's building one.
Right, but we're gonna have people do from time to time. I mean, I I don't know who this person is, so I don't want to say anything about the person that's actually building it. But from time to time, people are gonna do things that maybe other people don't agree with. It doesn't mean the government needs to regulate it.
I can, I think what I know of, and other staff can feel free to jump in. My understanding, this is in a council person's district who called Public Works Director, wondering how was that allowed to happen? There's nothing in code that points to why they cannot do this.
It's a long history of freedom, property, property right freedom. I'd say that's probably the underlying freedom that a property owner has to put the back of their house at the front of the property. I I think Nate Burgetz, he tells a great joke about that. Have you ever heard that?
If not, I'd be glad to hear it again.
Okay, yeah. Yeah, yeah. Brian, I don't know. He tells it really well.
Is, have you spoken with the fire marshal? I mean, is there a a difficulty? I I agree with property rights. I just, is there a definitely, but is there a problem? Maybe we could discuss with the fire marshal and see if he has any problem with it.
I'll refer, maybe Darian. Darian's office works more with the fire department than Darian's right here in the pink. She speaks more to the fire department than we do. We just, we're just asked to process an amendment and
There, there was a concern from the fire department as far as being able to like easily identify, especially in certain situations where medical treatment might be needed sooner rather than later. However, I don't know how big that was. That was just a concern that was raised on top of the fact that we had a city council member that wanted to see some action on this moving forward, and just general internal discussions about essentially conformity along the road. You have front doors continuously, and then you ought soon have this back of this house just randomly in the middle. So it was kind of like a combination of all things that we were just began to talk about it to see what our options were. Like Brian said, we can tighten this up for kind of change it if we need to, but this is, that's where it's all coming from.
I agree with the chairman on property rights, hundred percent. Yet, on the other hand, if it is, if if the fire marshal thinks it's a safety issue, then then maybe we could clarify a little more clearly what we need to do.
Well, I mean, the fire marshal, I'm, I mean, this is in the city of Chattanooga. Fire marshal can get into an ADU built behind a piece of property where you can't even see it. You can't, you can't. So I I can't imagine how the fire marshal has an opinion outside of the fact that the neighbors have an opinion on the fact that they don't like the appearance of the house because the front of it is built.
That wouldn't be a problem.
I, but we have freedoms to build ugly things, and you know, that that freedom is, I think, a good thing. Because if we can't build ugly things, then pretty things are less valuable. Well, I just want to say, I I I would like that, but then I I want to say one other thing in that it's a, it's our planning department doing architectural control at the end of the day, and I think that's a slippery slope, and what a visible front door is, and who determines what a front door is. It's it's one thing to say that you have to provide, you know, a pedestrian ingress egress. It's, it's a it's architectural control, in essence. Understood. What what's the will of the commission?
Mr. Chairman, I'll I'll make a motion to approve the two, two of the three, removing the one about the primary interest of the of facade facing the street.
We have a motion. It has been properly seconded. Any discussion? All in favor, say aye. Any opposed? Motion carries.
Councilwoman Burge, is you the second motion?
Yeah. And then, did you say you did have some staff updates?
We got another ordinance on the amendment as well.
Yes.
We got Kenneth Martin and Darian from LDL to talk about the flood plane, flood hazard regulation amendments. Got any questions on that? It's a, we have, they have new definitions being added. We also have a new FEMA firm maps being added, and I don't know what else. They can speak to what else is being added, but it's basically combining two sections into one in the zoning code. If you have any other questions, they can, they're experts on that.
Yes, so as I'm sure that most of you guys are aware, but those of you who are not, we are getting new firm flood insurance rate maps on November twenty eighth, twenty twenty five. With those new rate maps, FEMA is requiring us to update our ordinance. They supplied us with the the language we had to adopt, putting that into our code in the way that best fits in our zoning code. So that's why it's a a little chaotic, if you've seen it, but we got it in there. We're organized now. With that being said, since it's in the zoning code, it has to come in front of you guys and then go to city council. Failure to adopt the FEMA-approved floodplain regulations would result in the city of Chattanooga losing its participation in the National Flood Insurance Program, which would eliminate flood insurance discounts for residents and make the city ineligible for FEMA disaster assistance funds until the ordinance was approved. So that's where we're at. The major highlights from this, so the major updates from FEMA, they added thirty five definitions for clarity purposes. They updated references to the new maps, more inclusive of the different like flood zones. So we've always included all of these parcels, but now instead of having two different, which was like floodway and flood hazard area, they are more descriptive, and it's just broken out. So not more regulations on more properties, but just that it's broken out differently, to be more specific. And then everything else was just like minor rephrasing. While we were doing this, though, staff had some updates that we wanted to make, so there are three of those that are in there. The first one is floodway uses slash land disturbance. So we've updated the language to allow limited recreational activities, such as the riverwalk and bank stabilization within the floodway. Currently, our our ordinance states nothing can be done whatsoever. So, you know, we really just felt like this was aligned with Chattanooga's identity as a park city and ensuring continued access and resilience in our floodways. So that's one of them. Two is mass balance or a cut fill ratio. So this would introduce the requirement that any fill that is brought into the special flood hazard area must be offset with the equivalent excavation. This balances floodplain storage, reduces risk of increased flooding on neighboring and downstream properties, and supports, supports sustainable storm water management. The cut fill is one point five, one point two five to one that we've put in there. It just helps us maintain the balance of floodplain storage by requiring any fill placed in the flood-prone area to be offset with an equivalent amount of excavation, and it minimizes downstream erosion from water velocity increases, as well as really protects the neighbors in those areas. Do you, does anybody have any questions on those before I move to the third?
Yeah, you said one, you said equivalent, and then you said one point two five to one.
Yes, I'm sorry. That, it is one point two five to one, so it is not quite equivalent. It is slightly more.
So for every cubic yard you place in the floodway floodplain, you have to remove one point two five somewhere else?
Correct.
And what floodplain is this for? The hundred, the five hundred, all of the above?
The one hundred and floodway. Yes.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Chris.
Oh, so at, right now, if I'm not mistaken, there's, there's no off placement that we're required to do, or that people are required to do in the floodplain. Is that accurate?
That's correct.
And so we're, with with this, we're going from nothing to more than off, fifty percent offset. I mean, more than, more than a hundred percent offset is what you're saying.
That is correct.
Is that something you're asking for us to vote on today?
This is something we're asking to move forward today. We need the, it to go in front of city council and get approved before eleven twenty eight. That that was the deadline given to us by FEMA. So we got it together as quickly as we could to get it in front of you guys, because not only did we have to get it together, but we had to send it to FEMA to approve before we even brought it in front of you. So I apologize.
No, I get it. Y'all are under, under a time crunch there. I I do have some hesitancy to make such a massive change when when we don't even have the writing in front of us here to 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 look at. That that gives, that gives me some concern, but may maybe the rest of the commission feels different here.
Is the one point two five to one ratio driven by FEMA, or is that driven by?
No, that is by staff. So if you have a recommendation for something different, we are happy to look into it and do more before we go to city council. This is what, this is actually lower than what the best practices were that we were looking for in other areas. But we have just had I guess, a lot of development that has brought in a lot of fill that has created displacement that is that is beginning to flood our neighbors and others' properties. So we are looking for some mitigation from that. Obviously, we can't go backwards and do anything, and we're not trying to, but moving forward, we would like to be able to protect our fellow citizens.
Councilwoman Burge.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. So y'all help staff, help me with the timeline. Could we defer this for thirty days and make an exception and get it on the city council agenda in less than thirty days? So it would be the twenty fourth. So it would, it would meet your deadline of the twenty eighth. So if we heard it, if if we deferred this for thirty days to give this body enough time to digest it, so it would put us hearing it again on the tenth, and then, excuse me, and then hear it at the city council meeting on the twenty fifth of November, does that give enough time for notification if we get something in the works in advance?
You have to have fifteen days notice, city council, on the, yeah, because it takes amendment.
I'll put out there, perhaps, if there is just the one section that's not required by FEMA to move forward, perhaps the rest of it could move forward with that one clause, without the one clause for greater discussion, and I'd throw it out there for Darian.
It does, but I mean, we're, FEMA is not the city of Chattanooga. I mean, I understand that, like, there's this, we're, I'm not calling staff. I'm not saying anything about staff, but we're, we're being told you have to do this, and we have to make these changes. I I just
But but not the changes, the last two that Darian mentioned. Everything else is required by FEMA except for the floodway, the activity in the floodway and for this item, correct?
Yes, and then I have one more.
And so I think that if we make the distinction, what what absolutely has to be forward because that's required by FEMA, and we have a deadline versus the other three activities, perhaps we could make that distinction.
Was this something that we had to put out for public notice?
Yes, this was advertised for this meeting for public notice. Yeah.
What was the, go ahead. Yes, sorry.
I think, given the timeline, I would either want to remove this clause entirely for right now and revisit it at a later, later date. It seems like there's agreement on that. I will say, just, I've become increasingly concerned about floodplain management over the past few years, pretty much since Hurricane Helene kind of started setting off alarm bells in my head. So this is something I do want to take seriously, and I do want to consider. I think I would be willing to support a one-to-one cut fill ratio here and now without seeing any other documentation, but to justify one point two five to one, I would want to see those materials you were referencing, saying, here's what other counties do, here's what best practices are. So that's where I stand.
There are small lots where a one-to-one would not be feasible. And, I mean, we're talking about people's property, and you know, some of these properties may be in a floodplain that's a foot deep. So, I mean, not all floodplain is equal, you know, some of it could be a foot deep of floodwaters, and, you know, you know, as well as anybody that that these huge flood studies that are done from time to time for big developments can tell you that there is not going to be any impact from fill, and then they can sometimes indicate that there is impact from fill. And so, you know, it seems to me that, you know, I've seen it firsthand where we can just make a rule that says, okay, this, this rule will work no matter what, but the it's it's like our paving section. We have roads in some parts of our city where there's two inches of asphalt on top of dirt, and those roads have held up for twenty five, thirty, forty, fifty years because that, that dirt was hard enough to hold two inches of asphalt with no gravel or anything. You know, so like, when we make rules that, hey, here's the paving section that you're required to do, it eliminates creativity, it eliminates problem solving, it takes engineers out of the equation altogether to say, hey, in this case, filling this site is is not going to have an filling this site is, is not going to have an impact. And so then our rules should be built around like real information, not just like a blanket. This, this one hundred percent will protect everybody, you know, so I just struggle with it. Not to mention the fact that people's property that's in the floodplain, they, they may want to build houses on it. And they may need to fill it and it may just be six inches into the hundred year floodplain. And filling the site by a foot and a half has no impact on the, so.
I really struggle with it.
Oh, Mr. Anderson, and then Mr. Maybe.
I yield to Mr. Maybe because I'm going to make a motion.
Mr. Chairman, do you mind if she finishes?
No, go ahead. Yes, please.
The last one that we have is our elevation standard. So standardizing the requirement to be two feet above BFE. Instead of we have one foot for some and two foot for other structures. This is again, looking at best practices across our peer cities. It is the same on, for all structures for those. Also, obviously going more than one foot above BFE helps to, sorry, I'm losing my train of thought here. Reduce the long-term, I'm sorry, greater protection against flooding reduces long-term costs and creates, strengthens community resiliency. And I'll let Ken, do you want to speak anymore on that?
Particularly where are we?
Just on the, no, on the raising it from one foot to two foot BFE.
Absolutely. So right now, currently, we have a ordinance that's, that allows for two feet for stick build construction across space and one foot for slab on grade. From what I've looked at, from all of the, most of the peer reviews that I've done, Nashville, Knoxville, Charlotte, Memphis, St. Louis, which I didn't even know existed. All of these municipalities have a current regulation that is a standard of whatever they, whatever the higher standard is is across the board, is there's no distinction between construction type. So I feel like we feel as though this is conducive of what our ordinance should look like for clarity, for consistency, to provide stability and still be able to not have a huge impact on the cost of construction based on what we already allow.
May I ask a brief question?
Yes.
Could, can I ask staff, I had a sister that had tremendous impact from Fort Ogalfo flood a few years ago. They denied her flood insurance to happen again and cost her tremendously. What will this impact the flood insurance possibilities for our citizens? I, I agree with the chairman. I don't want to limit anything we don't have to. But I definitely want our citizens to be able to have proper flood insurance. Will there be an impact on that?
So continuing on, part of what we're trying to do for the city is get integrated into the community rating system program, which is a program that's offered by participants of the NFIP program, National Flood Insurance Program. That will allow for, depending on where we rate as a community, that will allow for a discount, a flood insurance discount between five, up to forty-five percent for participants that have flood insurance, which is a significant amount of savings for the community. The standards that are before you align with a higher rating in that program. One of the things that I noticed in this program to, to get adopted into this program is we're already doing most of it. We already log and maintain our, our records. We already have a higher standard that has been initiated prior to this new flood ordinance. So we're doing the things that align with such. We just want to make clear consistency across the board and be able to maintain stability for, for the well-being and the welfare of our community.
I, I am concerned, savings is great, but some people actually lose their flood insurance. When, when they have flooded once, they, they're being taken away. I mean, in North Georgia, I don't know if it's here or not, but I'm concerned that people are able to maintain flood coverage.
Well, being members of the NFIP program flood insurance has to be offered to constituents who are, who have a home or have a structure that is, that sits within the special flood hazard area. With being adopted into that CRS program or Community Rating System program, they would also have to offer those same discounts, whatever, wherever we rate at. They would have to offer those to the constituents because we are a part of that program as a community.
Additionally, and we're going to make this announcement at the end here, but we're planning on having a neighborhood roundtable to talk about all of this at the end of October, October twenty-seventh, right, Ken?
Yes, that's correct.
On, on October twenty-seventh, which we will, it's not just for neighborhoods. It's for anybody who wants to be a part, who wants to come and listen. But we're planning on having insurance companies there because there is this misconception that you can only get flood insurance if you are in the floodplain, which is not true. And so we'll be have, having insurance companies there. We also have TIMA, which is like the Tennessee version of FEMA, coming to help support us and talk about all the different things that we have listed here to be able to have a better discussion as well. October twenty-seventh, it's five to, five thirty to eight, and it's at city council?
No, it will be at the.
DRC.
Oh, at the DRC, one A.
When you did the study of peer cities, was there a sort of a mean average of what they were going, whether at or above BFE?
I was just going to say Nashville's at four feet above BFE for all building. Charlotte was at two and then Knoxville for one percent and two percent was at one foot above BFE. But another thing about having the mixed standards for us, we have recently employed a new floodplain management software that helps us with substantial damage assessments and different reviews that Ken has to do to help keep us compliant. They do not have a way currently for us to have two separate standards in it. So it's really, will be at a disadvantage because we won't be able to put that stuff into the system because we have two different standards and which that is part of our tracking for the Community Rating System Program, which helps get us better discounts.
What, what, if there's a hundred year floodplain and that's right here, this is the height of the hundred year floodplain, why would we want to require somebody to build it two feet, three feet? Or in the case of Nashville, four feet above the hundred year floodplain? What, what's the value in that? Because then it's just, again, it's an arbitrary number. Like, is that then the hundred and two year floodplain or the hundred and ten year floodplain? Like, there's, there's a number, but it just seems very arbitrary and. I would imagine Nashville, I can tell you why Nashville did it, to stop development, I'm sure. Because four feet outside the floodplain, what's the point?
No.
Why did they do four feet outside the floodplain?
Because it had a huge flood that happened, I believe in twenty-ten.
Two thousand and ten, yes.
Was it in a floodplain?
Yeah, it's a farm built on the bluff, right, right above, I mean, in normal circumstances, the river's way, way, way down there, but.
So it was a reaction to an event.
So if I may, what we are trying to do as a, as a city is be proactive and not reactive, like what I've seen across the board. So like you did say, that number seems arbitrary, two feet above an imaginary line. One, the one hundred year is not, from what I understood it to be, is not a chance that a flood is going to happen. Or my property hasn't flooded in over a hundred years. The, the one percent is a one percent chance that you could flood.
Any year.
In any year.
Yes.
One percent. So that two feet above or that free board number, whatever it is, arbitrary one to four feet, that just gives that property that much more flood risk reduction being at or above that level. So technically, I'm not the most technical person, but what I've come to believe it to be is, is when you plug those numbers into a flood modeling system, it will give you a level of elevation that gives, that's missed out a percentage of your probability to be flooded within one year. So that's what those numbers for the arbitrary numbers of one to four feet are based on. That's more of a technical question for the floodplain manager, which I am not yet, but working towards that. But, um, yeah, that provides some insight.
So after the recent flooding events, I actually went back through all the historical data that we've got on the rain gauge out of the airport, which went back to fifties or sixties, I think, and pulled. There you go. The, the depth and intensity of our storm events is increasing. It's not hugely dramatic, but it is happening. I mean, it's, you, you plot the trend line and it is going up. And so these hundred year, five hundred year storms that measure this percentage chance that a storm might happen in any given year, they're predictive, they're models, they're not always correct and they're not always, I mean, not always keeping up with what is actually happening, if that makes sense. It is a predictive model. It's not, this is what is going to happen over the next hundred years, next five hundred years, next thousand years. And we are seeing these storms increase. We're seeing a change in, in how much rain or how intense that rain is. I mean, what happened more, most recently with the most recent flooding wasn't a, an amount of rain so much as an intensity of rain at any given moment. And so I, I do want to see more data on this. I think setting some level, one foot, two foot, I think is worth considering based on what has been happening over the past decade, two decades of data that we have. I don't think we, I, I don't want to do that today. I think, I think this is another one that falls in with what we were just discussing about the, you know, how much cut and fill do you have? I think these two stipulations, I think we need more data on. I think we need a more in-depth presentation. I'd like to see the numbers behind it. And so I'd like to put those to the side to come back to them at a later date and move forward with what we need for FEMA today.
We are currently at two feet and one foot, just depending on what type of building.
Right, depending on the type of construction.
I will say seventy-three, River Cardinal's home wasn't built, but Hunter Road was under four feet of water I could not get through with the truck.
Well, I mean, there, there's risk associated with being alive. And, you know, just owning, I mean, there, there's just, there's risk. We can't remove it all. And, you know, yes, I don't disagree and maybe today we tabled the discussion, but to remove the ability for people to be able to make a decision in regards to what risks they're willing to take, it's just, doesn't, doesn't make sense to me. We, we, we own property in the floodplain and, and tons of it. And it's all newly constructed, it's all wood frame, and so it's two feet outside the floodplain. The insurance company looks at those and says, those don't have a very high risk and you're not required to have flood insurance. If we want to buy flood insurance, we certainly can. If we do buy flood insurance or we build them higher, they're only going to cost more to build and the rents are going to be higher. I mean, there's an impact to these decisions. You know, Barry Payne's not here, but he always says, you know, we can build a car that you can drive two hundred miles an hour into a wall, it can catch on fire and you can get out of and walk across, you know, walk across the infield and celebrate the fact that you're still alive. We can build, we can build a hundred percent resiliency into our city. It doesn't change the fact that if, if we start looking at it just from that standpoint alone, there's a cost associated with it that we may or may not like. And we do have lots and lots of our city that is in a floodplain and, you know.
And I think you've got to balance, what is the upfront cost? I mean, it is going to increase construction costs. Any sort of regulation like this is going to increase construction costs. We just had this, this presentation about how affordable housing is here in Chattanooga. So that is definitely a priority. On the other hand, when these sorts of events happen and people are without flood insurance or they've lost their coverage entirely, now you also have people who are dependent on mostly public dollar, public infrastructure that then has to be accounted for on the backend. So it's the, it's the upfront cost versus the long-term risk. How do you balance those two? There's, there's not, we're never going to get to a point where we can predict it with a hundred percent accuracy, but I think we need to have the discussion.
Councilwoman Burris, were you wanting to say something?
Other than I look forward to continue the conversation and not making a decision today because I think we can, we can talk about this a lot.
Do we need to make a motion here today?
I think it, I think it, I will just say it's really tough when we're not even looking at what FEMA is requiring of us in the timeline. And I'm not irritable with you, but, you know, to not have it here in front of us and to be told FEMA tells you, FEMA is telling you, you have to do this, do it.
But that's why I wanted to highlight what our staff changes were versus what FEMA had outlined. However, I, I'm trying, I, I, if we wanted to table these other two discussions, I don't know how that works if, when we go in front of city council, if we can make updates or what, I guess, Karen, our options are as far as that goes.
I think we can move forward if Planning Commission wants to remove them. I think we can move them forward. And then at Planning and Zoning Committee, we can also mention there's other items that did not move forward or you can come back to Planning Commission, pull those out and come back to Planning Commission.
I don't know if we're going to have enough time if we come back to.
But the, the items that have to be approved, I think could move forward and go to council.
Yeah.
And so I think that would be the recommendation at this point in order to meet the city's deadline. I think those are clear. I think those should move forward. It seems like there's will to move those forward and then pull the staff potential changes out and have further discussion on those.
Mr. Anderson.
Mr. Chair, I, I share your concern about just doing this without what's in front, without seeing everything in front of us. And if you, if you're frustrated with having to just blindly follow what the federal government tells you to do, I invite you to come work with us at the city because that is, that, that is a common occurrence that unfortunately happens. And, and the current federal government's not super permissible about cities not following the rules, you've noticed. So, so I would like to make a motion because we, we would be abdicating our responsibility to the homeowners of this county if we did not, the city and the county, if, if we let their flood insurance be affected by our inaction on rules that we know we have to pass eventually in the city. So I, what I would do is move to strike the two items dealing with filling and one foot versus two foot of construction from this document and move to approve the rest of it to city council.
And can you move to approve the base flood elevation as it stands rather than the amendment?
It's my intention that that would be a part of it. If you, if, if the language I'm using is only to strike those two things, then everything else would remain, would it not? In what you're asking us to pass?
No, I'm asking for the, we have two feet above BFE for all construction. We currently have it at two feet for stick build and one foot for slab. That would not be in there at all, which is a requirement by FEMA to have.
It's a requirement to have it, but I'm assuming it's, the number is not a requirement since all the cities that you said have different.
Correct. So, but if you strike it, then it's not on, on there at all. So if you just stick with the regulations that we currently have in place.
Under, understated, yeah. Okay, thank, yeah, thank you, Darian. That's a good catch. So then, then I would move to replace two with the one and two that we already have that is the current regulation that has been in effect and strike the section on, for every, is it foot or yard? One cubic foot, you have to replace one point two five cubic feet. I would strike that from the document and ask staff to come back to this body with something in writing so we can debate it and do our jobs as the Planning Commission of looking at it and determining what we think is best. So that is in the form of a motion, striking the one for one point two five and, and replacing the two with one or two as the current rules.
Second, any discussion?
I want to make sure I even know what we're voting on here. And I, I don't want to over, over emphasize this, but it is, it is frustrating to me that we have not received this, this. that we have not received this, this, something of this monumental change before this meeting. If I, if I missed it, I apologize.
It's in the pack, I thought, is it not in the packet?
It wasn't in my packet. It's not on the agenda uh, that I had in the packet at least. So.
No, it's not in mine.
Yeah.
Sorry, we, we thought that it was in the packet.
Yeah, sorry, we thought it was in the packet.
An apology.
But it's on the packet online.
Those over, I understand, and I, I could have pulled it up online. I, I may need to do both in the, in the future, but, but.
We'll check again.
Don't let me get off task. I just want to make sure I know what we're voting on here. Are we striking everything that is not directly required for by FEMA? And all that we're doing with the, with the elevation is keeping it what it is today?
Yes.
Is that accurate? Is that the way the staff understands it?
Based on the motion that's on the table right now, there was also the issue of uh, can you put Riverwalk or bank stabilization in the floodway? That based on this motion is still included, that's not required by FEMA, but that is included in this motion.
Yes.
Which I support wholeheartedly.
Yes, that's my intention.
And I, I want to make clear that I think there's, this is a conversation we need to have. Uh, it, and I uh, agree with, with almost all of what Commissioner Bird said over here that we got to start preparing for these more events, but I think it'd just be irresponsible of us to act without, without real, some real discussion and consideration. So that's where, that's where my concerns go. And I appreciate uh, Commissioner Anderson's motion, and I think that, that addresses my concerns.
Any other comments?
I would just say that when we come back to this conversation, I, I would like to see case studies and supporting documentation that doesn't just come from what other cities have done, but the, the science behind it. Um, you know, if we're hearing from Nashville that they've got a four foot, they have to be plus four BFE. Why? Not just that, hey, all of these other cities are doing this, so we should follow suit, but this is why these other cities are doing this.
Thank you for that, Commissioner Bird.
Because I just, I don't want to follow them blindly, but I do want to see what.
Yes, and I hope you guys know that we did do our research on this. This is not something that we took lightly. Um, this is something that we have been looking at for a long time. This is not something that, just when they told us to amend this, that we decided to do. This has been ongoing research that Ken has been doing. Um, but since we were doing amendments, we were like, well, this is the time to start introducing this, right? So um, we will, we will bring forward the case studies and more information, but I just want you all to know that there has been a lot of research that goes into this. We do not just follow cities blindly.
Right.
So.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, if I'm, one more comment here. So, so thank you for that, and I, I believe that definitely. You know, you can tell y'all put the, put the time and effort into this. Something that y'all may have already done, but I would like to, to kind of, kind of part of the consideration as we move forward is the, the impact in terms of the amount of parcels and, uh, in, in how much acreage we're talking about uh, is going to be impacted by these potential new rule changes.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
We have a motion and it has been properly seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries.
Can I get approval with the planning commission minutes of September eighth, twenty twenty-five? Do you want to comment on anything that's non-agenda related? Okay.
Mr. Chair, can I give a brief update on some staff updates?
Yes.
This is just a follow-up on a, it's more housekeeping than anything. Um, Ethan had asked us to get staff recommendations out more quickly. Um, we have been getting them out like six, six to seven business days before the meeting. Um, so we have a new schedule and really shooting for about two weeks. Um, so just to let you know, we kind of tried to do the packet in its entirety. So if you went, you saw it. I mean, Chris maybe pointed out, we maybe didn't make it this time, but we might, we're probably process it as staff recommendation, Platts, and then zoning ordinance amendments, but just, um, we are working on getting those out more quickly. Also townhouse massing, I believe it was two months ago. Uh, one of the changes was for townhouse massing. Um, at that point, we were looking at maximum of, I believe it was five attached units. Council changed that to eight attached units, so outside the urban overlay. Um, you can have up to eight attached units unless you were zoned previously, zoned allowed townhomes, and in that case you can have twelve. And so just to loop back to say, council up that number to allow more attached units outside the urban overlay by right. And then the other, the last item. Um, and the city administration asked us to look at accessory dwelling units and how we were doing those in the Form-based code, just more of a, I guess, um, just a practice, a practicum on how they're working. The Form-based code allows, this is, and with a question, the Form-based code allows ADUs associated with single unit dwellings. When you have two, three or four units on a lot, they're not considered ADUs, they're just a unit. But when you have multi-unit living, five plus units, um, we're just also calling them a unit. So one of the um, things we've talked about is we do want to encourage more smaller, um, smaller um, units. Um, and so these are in the Form-based code if I have a multi-unit development, and I'm seeing some confusion faces. Matt?
I'm fine.
Okay, I'm sorry. I just saw some confused faces. This is a question to you all.
I'm tracking.
We want more mult, smaller multi-unit, um, multi-units in the Form-based code with the idea that providing that range of housing type, right now a unit is required to have parking. So we're proposing and, and asking you all what you think about an amendment to the Form-based code that says if you have a dwelling unit under eight hundred square feet, that you are not required to either provide any parking or maybe there's some twenty-five or fifty percent. Because if you have an ADU outside, um, the Form-based code attached to single family house, you don't have to provide, provide a parking space for it. You have to, you know, offset it. But um, we are thinking about proposing an amendment to either if you're smaller than eight hundred square feet in one of these dwelling units. So they're not called ADUs, they're just a, they're just a unit, but a smaller unit. We would um, like to reduce the parking. We're thinking possibly zero, but maybe twenty-five or fifty percent. Um, some sort of other number there is appropriate. But again, this is just incentivize smaller units in our downtown footprint, in our downtown code area. Um, and by reducing the amount, any required parking, the amount of required parking, we think will incentivize smaller units just to really um, you know, increase that housing supply of the smaller units. Any thoughts, question, thoughts about that?
Just the way that parking is calculated for smaller units, I feel like it's kind of all or nothing, isn't it?
Well, that's one of the things we talked about. That's what says zero, and then we threw out there, maybe another number could work if there was, you know, depending on what planning commission kind of input.
Add in one unit in the Form-based code, that's one parking space, if I remember correctly.
Right. These are, this would be, for an example, if I have a mu, um, like a multifamily, a multi-unit development, we talked about, you could do some calculations. So if I have six units that are less than eight hundred square feet, maybe we could do a number, but you're correct. That's why we started with zero, but we understand that there might be some thought about another number.
For the record, Chairman, I'm in favor of zero, but we wanted to have this conversation among everybody.
Right, because we're thinking why, you know.
Zero everywhere, everywhere else.
Right, why would we not want to encourage those eight hundred, the smaller units to have?
I have a question, though. This is just me not knowing parking codes is how does ADA work then? If you have zero requirement, would ADA still require at least?
Residential, like a, a single family development doesn't.
But this would be multifamily.
ADA is based on the number of parking spaces that you have as a total.
Okay.
And so if you have zero parking spaces, you need zero ADA spaces.
Okay.
As soon as you start building parking, you have to follow that table of how many ADA spaces do you have?
Oh, thanks. By default, these are those five plus unit sites. Um, so um, just to be clear, we know that this is not really, we're calling them ADUs, but they're not really ADUs, they're just smaller units because there's no such thing as an ADU when the five plus unit, multi-unit living in the Form-based code. So this is a way to kind of work around that.
There's, there's also the distinction between ADA as the law and ANSI one seventeen point one being the adopted guidelines, which are the enforcement of said law and that people can build things that they can be sued over. If they don't meet the ADA law, so that's also, yeah, I mean, yes, a multifamily development. But I mean, this kind of goes a little bit to the heart.
Urban developments where no parking is provided, wouldn't have an ADA parking requirement.
Correct, but they would have to have ADA units.
Maybe.
If it's multifamily.
Residential units for sale like uh, HPR or a cottage court or something like that.
If it was a multifamily development, it would have to have, depending on what it is, type A, type B units to accommodate the law ADA. They could still get a building code, I mean, building permit and build away. They would just, you know, go ahead and prepare for a seventy-five thousand dollar minimum lawsuit in a couple of years, but that's, yeah. It's true, you don't.
That's right.
It's true. Yeah.
So it sounds like moving um, forward next month with the, with the reducing that required parking to zero for those units is something we'll move forward with then.
Yeah.
And then just last, it was mentioned at lunch, but just planning commission has met now thirty-two hours, I think, this year. And we just want to say thank you for your time. I know that doesn't include all the prep work, but primarily volunteer board, and so it's a lot of hours. We just want to say thank you.
Thank you. Hey, I, I do have a question, and I am so sorry, I, I think y'all are going to be so frustrated with me. This, um, this article nine that addressed the townhomes outside the urban overlay.
Yes.
So has that already passed city council?
It passed council. It came from planning commission with a recommendation to approve by five, but for staff to come back and give a little bit more work to see if what else could be done. Um, and it got approved at council at eight attached units. So we are still happy to come back and see what else we can do.
Well, I, I just think two things. One is if, depending on where those townhomes are located in a development, I can't, I still can't wrap my mind around why city council or the city cares how many units are contiguous. If they're on the interior of a development and, you know, and, and they're not fronting a current public right of way, why, why does city council or RPA care whether it's eight or twelve? As one point, so I, I understand they, they made a rule of eight, but I think that surely city council could be open to the idea of eight if it's on an existing and current public right of way as a block size. But if it's built interior of a new development on a newly plotted road, that it, it wouldn't have an opinion or, or some, something like that. And then the second thing I was going to mention is that um, eight townhomes does not tell us how big that building is. So what you're trying to control is massing, but those could be eight thirty-foot wide townhomes or it could be eight sixteen-foot wide townhomes. And so if what you're trying to control is massing along public right of way, then it should be a total block length, not a total number of units. And that way it would give the freedom to developers to say, okay, we can't have more than a hundred and fifty feet of block in, in a building. Well, that could be two, I mean, that could be ten, fifteen-foot wide townhomes or it could be five thirty-foot wide townhomes. Like, feels like that's a, is a better way to treat it um, and accomplish what it is that I think is trying to be accomplished.
I think we had some of that discussion two months ago, or I guess maybe three months ago now. And we can work on that because I think also it was brought up that there might be commercial areas where that twelve or more would be appropriate, like as a brown, kind of a line of, you know, brownstone or something. So we will work on that and probably come back next month for discussion to see. Um, I think you gave two points, kind of the massing and location. Um, so we'll bring that back for discussion next month for some feedback. And then we'll bring the eighty, the smaller unit in Form-based code back next month for adoption.
Thank you. Did you, did you have something? No, I was looking at Mr. Lyle.
I do.
He looks confused.
I'm, uh, well, that's just resting confused face. Yeah, before we adjourn, and, and with Barry not here, somebody will have to step up to the, to the plate and do that. I just wanted to say that in the past month, you know, since, since we came out of our previous planning commission meeting, where I, I feel like the, this dais received uh, a, a, a what felt like an, an, un warranted uh, degree of vitriol from, from the general public regarding um, sort of systemic lack of investment in the infrastructure required to meet the development demand of the current day. That um, you know, I think we, 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 and, and there's nobody here and, and maybe there's a couple of people on the internet listening to this. I just, you know, I think it's understandable how upset a lot of people are. And, and I'm, and I know at some point in the not-too-distant or maybe distant future, that conversation will circle its way back here to this, to this room with this group of people. I, I, that, you know, we, we, we were, I think, accosted with any number of, of colorful analogies and, and told lots of things about um, sort of our morality as it pertains to um, you know, people dying over these decisions. And, uh, and I understand people are upset. I'm not sure that this group of volunteers is, is the group necessarily that that ire um, would rightfully be directed at. But, but after that long and rambling introduction, I wanted to be on record of saying that it has been an honor to be on this and to serve with these people up here who take this work very seriously and to the staff who does as well. I understand that the general public is upset, but hopefully, you know, the work that we do will, will maybe in a decade or two help ease some of that frustration. But uh, yeah, just want to say thanks.
Thank you. Mr. Anderson?
Commissioner Lyle, I couldn't have said it better myself. Thank you for saying that. I, I just will add one thing. I don't know that the whole general public is upset, just the loudest people in the general public. And, and something that Commissioner Highlander, Councilman Burz, myself, those of us who have served in elective office learned pretty quickly is there might be three people in front of you at the podium who are really upset about something, but there are thousands more who aren't. So, so it's good for us to remember as, as we see in this meeting every month that the people who are here in opposition might be indicative of more people or they might be the only people in opposition, and we, and we don't know from case to case. So for every person who's here in opposition, there's a whole lot more who are in favor or just don't care.
If I could say, it is not the responsibility of this body to improve the infrastructure. It's a body of the councilman and the commission. And I, and I feel like she is and I am for one, doing everything I can to encourage the commission to improve the infrastructure. And, and correct me if I'm wrong, Chairman, but I don't think it's the responsibility of this board to improve the infrastructure, to encourage it, yes, but not to do it. So, but I do want to do it, to, to improve it. Thank you.
Well, we as staff like to thank you all as well, because this is a volunteer board, and you all did an excellent job. So you gotta know how hard it is, and um, if I do care, you wouldn't be here for four or five hours every Monday, once a month on Monday. So thank you all for what y'all do.
Well, with that, in honor of Mr. Payne's absence.
Thank you. Thank you. We are adjourned.